Private classes when we say no. Private classes when we say no. Private classes when we say no. Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
Private classes when we say no.
This is everybody, the concern here is just do that and hit that house and we're in the rocket, alright, baby.
How are you? It's good to see you.
There isn't, there isn't, I don't think there is.
This is stuff that was handed out at the 690 St. Paul meeting, the presentation.
Oh, thank you so much, Sinek.
What were you, sir?
Yeah, everybody, do you need blackberries?
Well, you just need one, you need one. Uh, my other one wasn't working. He's sitting right out there, he's in a black shirt. Very nice guy, very decent guy. Yeah, yeah, he's, but he, if you get him talking, he's pretty talk, very informed. Yeah, oh yeah, definitely. Easy to get to know. Easy to get along with. Hello. I say, no matter what. Sinek, is Alan okay, is Alan okay?
He came up with me.
75, okay. 75?
Hey, Sinek.
Okay. Meeting of the Board, Board of Education will come to order. We will start with our act of reverence and pleasant allegiance to the flag led by Commissioner Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to the acceptance of a couple of minutes that we have, June 18th, June 24th, as well as the June 24th Urban Choice Charter School Hearing, the June 24th Genesee Community Charter School Hearing, and the June 24th Special Meeting and Executive Session. Members have received these minutes in their weekly packets, and I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We don't have student recognition this month because our students are off, we'll return to that in September. We have some speakers addressing an agenda item. I would ask that the speakers approach the podium, you have three minutes. As soon as the beeping sound commences, I would ask that you conclude your remarks, don't, I don't want to have to cut anyone off, so please, if you can just respond when you hear the beeping. We have, our first speaker is Sean Glover, is Sean here? Sean here? Is Sean? Sean, you here? Come on up, Sean, to the, to the microphone. And just so everyone knows, whenever we have students on our agenda, we always, we always add the, the students first, the students are always added to the top of the agenda regardless of what they're speaking on per our bylaws. So Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Evans. On behalf of everyone who's here with either Metro Justice and AQE, behalf on the budget cuts, and I spoke to you, Mr. Bizar, on many different occasions, and you always told me how you liked what I was doing politically, how I took trips to Albany and how I, how I, how I always made my face shown in places that you probably wouldn't if you think I was in. How you see me in school with ties on and, and like sweater vests on and everybody else is not in the same way. I try to present myself more than that, because I was promised something, and it was something that was given to me. And what was given to me is a program in my school that, that's not in my school or city school district. It's in, excuse me, Mercy and McQuaid, they have it in their school, they take it as an elective. It's an expensive program, but this budget cutting is going to cut all that from us. One thing, one thing I could say about it is, last year we were supposed to do a fundraiser, which didn't happen, and that was kind of a big pushback. And like, I have a teacher, an art teacher, a music teacher, a social studies teacher that all want to work with me on this program. We already have 30 kids in our art class. Some of our social studies classes, some of our science classes have 15, 17 kids, but our art and, our art and health have 30 kids. If we cut another art and health teacher, it's just going to be hectic, I know it is. There's no possible way we can probably shift that out. I don't have the exact knowledge on what's really going on in my school, like, it's hard to find out, like, certain details about things, but if I'm wrong, I would like you to correct me about my school if you know anything more. But, and I just came to say that on behalf of me and Youth in Government, AQE, Metro Justice, and I expect to see you guys a lot, a lot more too, alright? Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Blue? Is, uh, is Scott Blue here? Scott Blue? Come on up, Scott.
Thank you, Board, thank you, everybody. I'm here to speak about the budget cuts and class sizes. Greetings, everyone, my name is Scott Blue II, and I'm a proud senior at School Without Walls. I stand before you in strong support of smaller class sizes based upon my own personal experience in education. See, I was not always a proud student at School Without Walls. In fact, up until this year, I was homeschooled by my parents. Homeschooling is the ultimate form of small class sizes, and ultimately, this one-on-one attention is what helped me excel as a student. So, when my parents and I decided, decided to give public school a chance, you would imagine as many others have, that it would be a total disaster, but it wasn't. My transition from homeschool to public school was a very smooth one, to say the least. Now, you may be asking yourselves, how could someone that was taught one-on-one his whole life adapt to a classroom environment? Well, the answer is simple. In my school, School Without Walls, not one classroom has over 20 students in it. In fact, most classes have up to 17 students in it. Although I do realize we are in a recession, but cutting teachers' funds for public schools is not the answer. President Franklin Roosevelt once said, "In times of a depression, a depression, my friends, worse than a recession, a depression, we must make advancements inside education." We must never forget that children are our future workers and leaders. And I don't know about you, my friends, but I don't want a future full of undereducated workers and leaders. So, my fellow Rochesterians, I urge you to not ask your school board commissioners what they can do for your children, but demand that they make amendments to the budget to assure your children an equal education. Thank you.
Mary, Mary Adams? Is Mary Adams here? And Mary Adams, Mary Adams will be followed by Hubert Wilkerson.
Thanks once again for the chance to talk to the Board. I'm speaking regarding the military recruiting policy issue. No school district in the United States has suffered any federal funding consequences or other type of sanction from failing to meet NCLB No Child Left Behind requirements for release of student information to military recruiters, including the many that require parental consent procedures for release. However, many districts have changed their policies under threats from military and federal government agents. Many, however, continue to require affirmative, informed consent. There's one example that we have verified today with the administration, the principal's office of Montclair, New Jersey, that they are more than willing to talk with any of you commissioners, and I have the name and the phone number of this administrator who can describe to you the policy that's been in effect since 2003 without problems, where they collect names comprehensively and turn them over to the military every year with a smooth process. I believe one of the other speakers will give you that documentation and those phone numbers. One other thing, what I'm speaking here about is the threat, and I believe it's a perverse threat, I believe it's, I don't want to use the word exaggerated, but I think the level of the threat that's being pushed against board members and the community is, is wrong, and we need to address that. One problem with the history of this, this situation, this conversation that's been going on since January, I just want to read, I emailed the superintendent regarding my position on this, that I was not in favor of changing the policy, and he responded to me that, of course, I have a right to refuse individually and that we should work politically to change the law. He also said, "Others who have refused have had to go, to forego millions in Title I aid from the federal government. This is not about money, but if we choose to accept the federal dollars, then we need to comply." When I asked for the data, he responded back, "There is no data because all districts have complied with the law." So, we need to look at districts like Newark, like Montclair and the many others that I wasn't able to contact while I was at work today to confirm with the administrators that, in fact, they do have opt-in policies that are compliant. Going back to the issue of the threat, you really need to ask these questions. Did the federal government, did the Federal Department of Education notify via certified mail the chief state school officers who represent any alleged noncompliant local educational agencies? That would be us. If yes, who is that state officer? And has that person interacted with you, you commissioners, the elected commissioners and/or the public, so that a full and public discussion engaging contentions and legal complexities around this issue are truly appreciated? Has the Family Policy Compliance Office of the Federal Department of Education corresponded with our local educational agency? I believe the answer is yes. Has the FPCO corresponded with Governor Patterson? Did the Secretary of Defense designate, correspond to Governor Patterson 120 days after the military's assessment, finding a problem with our district? If yes, there are many, many months remaining between that correspondence and the correspondence to congressional committees at the one-year point.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Hubert Wilkerson, is Mr. Wilkerson here?
Thank you, thank you for having me here. I'm going to, going to read for a parent information describing Santa Cruz started the year process. Starting August 19, 2009, Passport Day picking up, picking up your schedule. To come aboard, students are required to attend Passport Day. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors are also required to bring the forms listed below available to download on your website or pick up from the counseling office starting Monday, August 10. Incoming freshmen should have already returned these with your course selection sheet when you are, when you are called enrolled. Number one, emergency card listing three emergency contacts. These individuals do not need to be relatives, family, friends, neighbors, or coworkers are fine, but they do not need to be adults. People history form. Students will only be allowed to pick up their schedules before school starts as they attend Passport Day and submit an emergency card in pupil, pupil health history form. With the exception of freshmen, all other students who cannot attend regardless of, of the reasons, vacation work, etc., will need to wait until the first day of school to pick up their schedule. What is Passport Day? Due to start, due to state mandates around paperwork that must be collected as well as read, or as well as need, have current pictures of everyone, each one of our students to ensure a safe campus. Parents should be aware that the release of a student's schedule is tied to this event. The parent portal will not be available in August for this reason. Students have their pictures taken for free, students IDs, which is required to attend all dances, check out, check out books from the library, use the internet along with the internet, use stickers, and much more. And except for the seniors, this is the picture that will appear in the, in the yearbook. Students will pick up their itinerary from the, from the year, either or the class or schedule, and receive free, look like, looks like a Harbor High School day planner sponsored by the Boosters. Students may also bring any books they need to return. Can parent, can a parent, friend, or relative pick up on my schedule for me? Unfortunately, no. No one of the, no one of the, one of the primary purposes of this day is tied to, to security. It's important to have current pictures of Harbor, Harbor High students to ensure a safe campus. To receive your schedule, students include seniors who have their portraits taken for their yearbook and must attend. Do you have had your picture taken the previous year? What if I cannot attend Passport Day? The first day of school, there will be taken outside of the counseling office where students can pick up their schedule and day planner. Please make sure to bring the completed work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Cheryl Marshall, is Ms. Marshall here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cheryl Marshall. I've spoken here before, and as you may recall, I am a proud parent of an honor student at School of the Arts. The budget situation as it stands has brought me to the point of house hunting in the suburbs, and my husband and I are certainly not the only city parents thinking of the same thing. I am here tonight because I have grave concerns about the numbers that apparently Tom Petronio and the district's PR team are feeding to the business community about our city schools. In a recent DNC article, Ed Petinella, Chairman of the Rochester Business Alliance, stated that business people love numbers for the clear information they can provide, but numbers can be manipulated and without context present a distorted picture. I believe that's what's happening in discussions about the city schools. In his editorial, he claims that the numbers prove Mr. Bizar is on the right track to improving city schools and parroted the district propaganda that city schools have a ratio of 10.8 students per teacher, as good or better than most districts in the state. What he did not say is really what's at stake here. Most certainly, he probably thinks he was talking about classroom teacher ratio. That number, 10.8 students per teacher, is the ratio you get when you also include all the peripheral staff in the building and add them to the actual classroom teachers.
Please,
No parent, no parent I know can say that their child has ever been in a class with 10 or 11 other students, and if you accept that ratio of 10.8 students per teacher, then by Mr. Bizar's own mandate of a minimum of 18 students to one, why every class in the district would have to be canceled. I respectfully ask Mr. Bizar and his team to provide accurate numbers and information to the public rather than manipulated numbers. And that, my friends, would include accurate information about the real number of central office administrators, the associated costs, and why that ratio remains the highest of all the urban school districts in the state. I do believe that we should all stand behind the superintendent as he addresses accountability in our district, bringing spending in line, and let's start by telling the truth about where and how that spending is aligned, and not providing the business community and others inaccurate and misleading statistics. I respectfully ask that each of you commissioners ask the hard questions about administrative staffing levels and also, in particular, arts education throughout the district, not just at SODA, and reinstate some of the positions that were wrongfully cut from this budget. You need to look for the truth, not just at the statistics.
Thank you. Ricardo, Ricardo Adams? Ricardo Adams? Followed by Maria Cipione?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the problem with the proposed policy that we talked about here at the Policy Committee. And it's difficult to do that since, you know, the public cannot have access to this proposal. From the presentation at the hastily convened Policy Committee meeting two days ago, the broader problem with banning the good policy, the new policy raises a lot of questions. One is parental versus student. Commissioner Powell raised a concern in the past regarding contradictions between FERPA and CLB. Mr. Johnson said that a major component for the new policy would be to have students get a form in class asking about information releases to the military, colleges, and employers. Can minor-age students sign releases for colleges and employers? Aside from the federal law contradiction, isn't it ridiculous that students in high schools must have signed permission slips to go to educational events or field trips to use the internet at school, to take advanced placement classes? And yet, there, the exception is that they can make a decision to invite military recruiters into their home. And let me be clear about this, too. I'm not against the military, I'm not anti-military. It's a privacy issue here. I reiterated it before, and I'm going to reiterate it again. If a person, if a person comes to my door and knocks on my door, and if I don't tell them to come in, they need to keep moving. Don't just say, "Well, I presume I can come in." And that's the way this thing is working out here. For these no responses, we're presuming that that means, yes, that people can be contacted. The other problem is about the military recruiting data that was discussed on Tuesday. I don't necessarily support the San Francisco model as a substitute for the current policy, but, you know, I'm curious as to whether the current proposal includes San Francisco's policy on equal access and provisions for community groups and alternate service opportunities. If the current policy does not have a clear and comprehensive plan for how to ensure an accurate and balanced presentation, that must be added to comply with equal access requirements for controversial subjects. Like I said, while it's difficult to analyze and criticize specifics of the administration's proposal because the public has not seen it, it is clear from the presentation on Tuesday that significant work needs to be done before this should be voted on. Thank you.
Do not change your opt-in policy. It was the right decision when you passed it in 2005, and it's the right decision now. It's the best way to protect our students from the predatory practices of military recruiters. It's the best way to protect the privacy of students and their families, and it's the best way to disrupt the race and class discrimination embedded in the military recruiting If you change this policy, you will be accomplices in triaging the most vulnerable of our students. After 12 years of teaching them about nonviolent conflict resolution, use your words, keep the peace, you will hand these kids over to a military organization who deconstructs them and then reconstructs them as people ready to kill or be killed. I understand that the Defense Department has threatened to challenge your present good policy in the name of upholding bad law. You are being asked by us to have the moral courage to stand your ground. Let them go through the process of a legal challenge before you vote on this. Don't succumb to the fear mongering that would make you think that they can do anything right away. Time is on our side. Let them argue to a judge about the bad law contained in No Child Left Behind, that that doesn't violate larger good laws contained in the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, and even higher international laws about conscription of child soldiers, because you decided in the policy meeting that 7th and 8th graders were going to get to decide about recruiters contacting them. You are charged with the education and safety of these students. Take it seriously and keep your present policy. Think of it as the warning on your computer when you're about to do something that cannot be undone. It asks, "Are you sure you want to do this?" Don't our children deserve that same last-minute act of reflection that opt-in allows? Only then is their real consent. Don't sell these kids' dreams and aspirations short. This world has such big problems. We need all of their intellect and creativity to solve them. Don't purposefully underdevelop them by overcrowding their classrooms, and don't sell them off so you can wrap yourself up in the flag. Mr. Evans, you did the...
Followed by Barbara Dietz.
Hi, my name is Crescendo Cipioni. I'm a recent graduate of School of the Arts and a member of Rochester Students for a Democratic Society. I'm speaking in opposition to the change in military recruitment policy, though I am also vehemently opposed to the unjust and idiotic district budget. Firstly, the fact that this issue, the military issue, was allowed to lay dormant until Commissioner Powell, one of the opponents of this change, was out of town so she could not be here to vote on it, is a disgusting display of political maneuvering that shows a blatant and total disregard for the democratic process. Further, the fact that this issue was put off until the summer in the hopes that the students, parents, and community members who have overwhelmingly opposed this change would forget about it shows a remarkable contempt for the community as a whole. I would also like to point out that the chair of the Policy Committee, who is largely responsible for this, Commissioner Elliott, was, if I recall correctly, voted out of the chairmanship of that committee but did not step down. I don't even understand how that's possible, but I do understand that Commissioner Elliott is up for reelection this November. Another thing I've observed is Commissioner Elliott's attempt to paint any opposition to the change in policy as racist. Well, the fact is that the military is a racist institution with a documented, with a documented tendency to target urban students of color because they see them as easier to coerce and manipulate because they have fewer alternatives available to them. The policy change will give this racist institution greater access to students in addition to violating their privacy by not first requiring student or parent consent. I'd also like to address the concern that some board members have voiced over breaking the law. I called Louis Slaughter's office today, and apparently, the No Child Left Behind Act has actually expired without being reauthorized. Although Congress still funds NCLB, it is clear that the political will does not exist at the federal level to reauthorize or enforce it. This makes the illegal threats made by local recruiters even more empty and far-fetched. Regardless of this, to pass this policy change would violate the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, a law that expressly orders schools to protect the confidential information of students, a law that has been on the books since 1974 and has been tested in court many, many times. To adopt this policy change would be, in fact, illegal and may make the district vulnerable to legal action. I beg you not to pass this atrocious and illegal policy change. If you do, though, know that we will not go away, and you will have to deal with that.
Hello. The current Rochester City School District policy provides parents appropriately, provides parents the opportunity to give explicit direction to schools, and this policy is compliant with the NCLB. Despite overinterpretation of the No Child Left Behind language by military, staff, and others, the law does not forbid local districts from seeking informed parent consent. The issue becomes a question of how to ensure that all families are allowed to make their wishes known. The problem is not our policy, but the district's failure to implement the policy at all. When recruiters weren't able to get any names this year, they informed the superintendent. Had the existing 2005 plan been implemented, the military would have been provided a list of names of students who would like to speak with recruiters, and the current problem would not exist, as it does now. Suppose hypothetically that our policy was implemented with an 85% or 90% response rate, reasonable given we should insist on 100% documentation of each student's emergency contact info. Suppose recruiters believed that they were not getting a long enough list and decided to challenge our local policy. Even in that case, the board's response should be to enhance procedures, to diligently get 100% response rates. The response should not be to throw out our existing carefully constructed policy. The military wants names, and they can currently obtain them under NCLB, but they are not entitled to legislate how we handle the process of ensuring parent and student knowledge and consent. They may not care about knowledge and consent, but we do, and that is why we constructed the 2005 policy in the face of No Child Left Behind provisions. Unfortunately, Mr. Johnson has contributed to the lack of clarity about our existing policy. He de-emphasizes that we even have a policy. Not surprising, since presumably, it is not legal for the district to ignore an approved board policy. It would be helpful, it would be helpful to know the rates of response to emergency contact form filings for students in each year. We know the rate last year of current forms was apparently zero, and military recruiters ought not to be the only ones concerned. But moving forward, let's focus on taking our good policy seriously and doing what it takes to get implemented. There are models out there that work. Also, we definitely do not need our class sizes expanded. Thank you.
Thank you. David, David Dornford? Mr. Dornford here?
My name is Jake Allen. I'm a resident of the city of Rochester, a student at Monroe Community College, and a member of the Local Students for a Democratic Society. I want to tell you about my experiences with the opt-out policy at my high school, and that's Hilton High School where I graduated last year. While I was in high school, I and my fellow students were faced with the same problem that Rochester City School students will be faced with if this policy passes. Myself and a few of my friends realized that the vast majority of our 1,000 or so fellow students and their parents were completely ignorant about the fact that their information was being handed over to the military for recruitment purposes. And by the way, Commissioner Elliott, my school was mostly white. So, the idea that this is somehow a racist, that people who are opposed to this are racist is utter nonsense. It then fell upon the few of us who are familiar with this part of the No Child Left Behind Act to try to educate our peers and their parents about the policy. We managed to distribute through a campaign over 200 opt-out forms that explained to our fellow students what the policy was and how to opt out. Even with the incredible effort of these students who worked tirelessly to educate their classmates, the vast majority of the student body remained ignorant to the opt-out policy and most did not respond. So, students continued to be contacted by military recruiters who have no restrictions as to the promises they can make to potential recruits and who have quotas to meet in regards to the number of recruits they receive each month. We know from countless studies and surveys that military recruiters lie because, as I said before, they have an incentive to do so. According to the New York Times, nearly one out of every five military recruiters was under investigation in 2004 for offenses varying from threats and coercion to false promises that applicants would not be sent to Iraq. This is not only an issue of student privacy, but an issue of student safety, an issue of disregarding the future of our students and thrusting them as cannon fodder into an illegal war of aggression. By voting in favor of this proposal, you are complicit in perpetuating the lies put forward by recruiters and further violating student privacy. My organization is vehemently opposed to this proposal, and we will do everything in our power to stop it. Mark my words. Thank you very much.
Gary Puddup? Gary here? Gary Puddup, is he here? Oh, hi, Gary. Gary will be followed by Jacob Stidio.
Thank you. I'm Gary Puddup. I represent the New York Civil Liberties Union. You know, there are times when we're faced with difficult choices, and I understand that you face these more than most. This time, the choice is between the principles of American citizens' freedom to make personal choices, his privacy rights, and the larger meaning of fair and equitable treatment under the law, and those are weighed against the threat of the loss of funding. It's unfortunate that this choice is pressed by one of fear. For three years, the district policy was unchallenged, and when it was challenged, it wasn't because the policy was bad, it was because of procedural issues. That tells us that there's a place where the principles of the policy the board followed were correct, and that such a policy was workable. We ask the critical questions regarding the actual threat and whether it is more responsible to rush through a bad policy under pressure, or whether it is more responsible to critically examine both the existing policy's integrity and to digest the steps multiple government agencies and specific individuals must carry out in order to harm the district in this way. I'm also concerned about the principle of democracy. This policy was proposed but two days ago, and I understand that there's supposed to be a vote on it tonight. That's hardly a system by which the people, the citizens or those concerned, have enough time to exactly examine the intricacies and the specifics of the policy and make addresses. So, I ask the board members to reflect on those principles and the principle of participatory democracy, where these people and other people have a chance to look at the specifics of the proposal that's out tonight before it's voted on. There's a lot at stake here, and I ask that when you reach a decision tonight, that it's one that holds true to both those principles I talked about before and to the principles of democracy. Thank you.
Jacob, Jacob Stidio? Is Jacob here? Jacob will be followed by Thomas Gregory.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Stidio. I'm a member of Rochester Students for a Democratic Society and a recent graduate from School that Walls High School. I'd like to take a moment to voice some more concerns about the proposed recruitment policy in addition to the concerns previously brought up. One point is that the logistical and implementation questions raised by commissioners at the Policy Committee meeting would need to be addressed systematically and in detail. There would need to be an evaluation method to ensure parental consent was decisive and a way to make sure the most current wishes were honored in cases of change. However, it would be better to apply that effort to implementing the existing 2005 policy so that recruiters could have, could access information for those students who wish to release their information with a more straightforward procedure while also ensuring emergency contact information is on file and up to date. Another concern is about the assumption that parents' response rates will be low. State law requires immunization and health status forms be filed with the district. We must achieve 100% response with this or be in noncompliance with the law. There is a process in place to achieve returns on all students. Nonresponders are recontacted until they respond. Is compliance with military recruiters more important than protecting public health? While I still have time, I'd like to take a second to reiterate my opposition to the changing of the opt-in recruitment policy. I'd like to remind the board that they will be met with resistance from students if the policy is reversed. Thank you.
Thomas, Thomas Gregory, followed by Thomas Dietz.
Well, as you know, in the past, I've spoken in favor of changing the policy and allowing military recruiters greater access to your students. I work as a volunteer, helping out at Recruiting Command. I can tell you this here, is that when we have people who do come down to the window or down to the office, we try to find a job for them. Not everybody goes to the front lines. In fact, to tell you the truth, most of the infantry is already filled. They'll get jobs in logistics, jobs in supply, jobs in communication, jobs that they'll probably never, not be able to get out of high school here in Rochester, New York. Not because they're black or white, but to tell you the truth is, we actually invest a whole lot more responsibility in 20-year-olds, you know, right off the bat than anyone going to get here, right just out of high school. I'm sorry, that's the truth. And the bottom line is, while they're there, they're going to be earning college credits. They're going to earn money to basically offset, hopefully, future educational opportunities, maybe the opportunities they can't afford right now. Maybe the opportunities they can't afford right now. The other thing too is that if they have a criminal record, they have a problem, and we can find a wavable way of getting it through. Our recruiters will go ahead and will say, look, yeah, people make mistakes in the past, but by golly gosh, we're gonna try to make an opportunity for you. And I address that to Mr. White in particular because you've raised that question several times in different contexts. There's a lot of things that the military does that's very, very positive. Most of the time, it's always confronted as, well, you know, war, kill, and all this stuff here. But the truth is, you'll find that most of the police officers, RPD, are either prior Army vets or prior Marine Corps vets. I favor the Marine Corps vets myself. But the bottom line is, is that in many cases, when you have a group like that that's recruiting, they like to recruit from people with prior military service. I know that one of the agenda items in Rochester, New York, is to get more blacks than people of color into the police force. Generally, that's a requisite. I know this too, that they'll have healthcare when they're there. They'll be showing up for work 40 hours a week, usually, on time. They'll be dressed well, they'll be fed well, they'll get medical healthcare, they'll have all kinds of opportunities to be supervised. But guess what? The majority of our sergeants in the Marine Corps, in this case here, I think, are an average of 24 years of age. So they're gonna be doing a lot of recruiting, a lot of supervision too. I hope you give military recruiters greater access. I haven't seen any of the abuses I've heard spoken about here. I've been active with this command since my son enlisted in the United States Army four years ago. I'm a former service Marine. I'm very proud of that. I know a lot of Marines. We built the wall up there in Gates Park. We're still a family today. I'll tell you one thing, if you trust your students too, these military recruiters, all the services, they'll do the best. If we have bad people out there, and I'm sure there's bad people everywhere, right? There's always them 10 percenters, but they don't last very long because we stand for something. And by gosh, we're not gonna back away from the responsibilities that we hope you entrust us with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Dietz?
I'm a school instructor. I'm also a certified social worker, and I work at the Monroe County Jail. It's my understanding that tonight there are some resolutions for the board regarding the displacement, the layoff, the termination, the abolishing of some school instructor positions. So I'd like to read you a portion of a petition that we have to present to the board tonight and go from there. We would respectfully ask the school board to, number one, direct the district to honor its current contract with school instructors. To number two, direct the district to renegotiate a memorandum of agreement or new contract language to allow some or all ISS in-school suspension room instructors to be staffed by school instructors. Three, we would direct the school board to ask the district to allow elementary certified school instructors staff time to pursue core secondary certifications without displacement from their current assignments, mostly in the youth and justice program, and to work with the RTA and the school instructors unit on a negotiated settlement on the issue of future assignment by certification in the incarcerated youth programs. Number four, we ask the school board to direct the district to reinstate a school instructor, social worker, transition position at the Monroe County Jail that provided services which were clearly established as both needed as well valued by and valuable to inmates. And number five, we respectfully ask the school board to direct the district to work with the RTA and the school instructors unit on standards and uniformity within the in-school suspension rooms across the district, using the models of the many very successfully-run ISS rooms run by school instructors over the past year. I know that we've had some discussions with some of the board members, and we thank you very much for those who have taken the time to listen. Right now though, regarding my own position and its possible abolishment here tonight, and it's my understanding, having talked to the board clerk, that to continue to discuss my own situation, the board would need to go into an executive session where we could continue to discuss the matter. And so I ask for that right now. So then what would be the option to do that?
I would suggest speaking to you.
Again, you're voting on this tonight.
But again, that's a personal matter. You have to take it with the union as part of the collective bargaining contract.
And again, I was informed by the clerk that the board could go into an executive session tonight to discuss that issue.
We can't help there unless there's a member that wants to do that. When we get to that area, I'll leave that to prerogative of my colleagues when we get to that area.
So then I specifically ask the school board to please end the reprisals going on against union elected leaders that have led to the abolishment of the position of the school instructor transition position at the Monroe County Jail. And I point out that there is a plan to place, to make a teacher on assignment position and to reestablish a new transition position, and there is a plan to prevent me from being able to hold that position.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dietz. We will now move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, commissioners. First, we want to discuss the successful kickoff of the Rochester Leadership Academy on July 8 at St. John Fisher College. Thanks to members of the media who attended this event. This work will be instrumental in moving the work forward for us as we look to improve student achievement. To give special thanks to Dr. Sam Walton, the Wallace Foundation, which underwritten the entire program, the New York State Education Department, ASAR, SANIS, the New York State Council of School Superintendents. As you know, I've been out away for a few days attending a series of meetings. As you may know, I'm on the executive committee of the American Association of School Administrators, the 20 of us who are part of the governing body for ASA. This 145-year-old organization is a professional organization for more than 13,000 educational leaders, mostly superintendents around the country and around the world. This was their annual meeting in Seattle. We discussed primarily the national standards that are gonna begin to be rolled out this July that will be better aligned to international benchmarks. This work is being coordinated by the Council of Chief State School Officers. I know someone asked what that was. Those are the commissioners and state superintendents. The National Governors Association, an American testing company better known as ACT. We also discussed a number of other national policy issues, including the work coming out of the US DOE for the stimulus from Rodney Duncan, as well as the Race to the Top dollars that'll begin to roll out this coming school year. You may know that there's about $4 billion coming out from Washington around Race to the Top that will begin to roll out to states across, across the country. Again, this has to do with innovations, school constitutions, et cetera. In alignment to that, yesterday in New York City, I was part of a meeting with the Board of Regents, the Chancellor of the Board of Regents, Regent Lester Young, the Senior Deputy Commissioner, the interim commissioner, and the Big Four, Syracuse, Buffalo, Big Five actually, Syracuse, Buffalo, Yonkers, New York City, and Rochester. Primarily, we discussed the New York State's application for the Race to the Top funding, and I'll give you copies of our presentation and suggestions to the Board of Regents and the Big Five for the Race to the Top. I believe $350 million will begin to flow this fall to states that are showing the best work moving forward. These are competitive grants, and the administration in Washington is looking for states who are the most innovative around this work as they plan to show what can be done around urban education across the country. Secondly, we discussed at length the 21st century grants. You may know that only 10% of the 21st century grants are given to upstate New York. 60% goes to New York City. Rochester and Syracuse this year received none of the money. We have about four after-school programs in a number of our schools that will be impacted seriously with its lack of funding. The senior deputy and the Board of Regents promised an internal audit. They understand the inequities that exist in the funding for 21st century grants, and they look to address that. Unfortunately, not for this coming year, but certainly for the year, for next year. Lastly, the Board of Regents and the Senior Deputy discussed with us the increases in the cuts course for ELA mathematics. As you may know, next year, they're gonna begin to raise the bar for proficiency in New York State around ELA mathematics. Makes our work a bit more difficult, but we certainly agree that it's time to begin to raise the standards, begin to push the conversation so our kids are better prepared for post-secondary work. The last two things we discussed, of course, were the definitions of the high school cohort. You may know now, starting next year, what is proposed is that if a student attends a school for even one day, they become part of the cohort for graduation. That presents a greater challenge for us in urban systems because of mobility, not across the systems, across schools in the system, but across cities and states or even countries because many of our kids come into our schools and leave and go back to their home countries and come back. So the challenge of tracking and following and recouping these kids will be more difficult for us with a challenge that we'll have to live up to. And the last, of course, you may know, is the continuing elimination of the local diploma. You may know in a few short years, the local diploma will be no longer in New York. Therefore, high school graduation, every student will pass the Regents examinations with a 65. It's been phased in for the past two years, will continue to be phased in over the next two to three years, and would, again, that will be completely eliminated. Last thing I want to say about this is that despite the fact that the standards have gone up with high school graduation, our numbers continue to climb, and that goes to the wonderful work being done in our schools with the high school graduation and even with the summer program that we have this summer. We have, I believe, the largest this year, the largest number of high school students enrolled in summer school, even more than last year they've ever had in the past. So we continue to push, to push our way toward the 75% goal graduation. And the last thing on my agenda today, commissioners, is the fact that we are looking to push out this five-year plan for improvement. We released a statement to the media and to the community this afternoon. Members of the Parent Council were contacted yesterday, Latino Coalition was contacted yesterday. We're looking for members of the community to actually weigh in on what we should be doing. The link, if you did not get it, is on our website. Please take a look at it, folks in the audience, and assist us in coming up with a five-year strategic plan. Thank you. Margaret for tonight.
Thank you. Questions from my colleagues directly related to the superintendent's report that he just gave? Vice President White?
Yeah, the superintendent bizarre, whose idea was it? Obviously, it wasn't ours, that this cohort definition should be changed, that if just one student stays for one day, then four years later, we're accountable for their graduates. Whose brilliant idea was that?
Well, the commissioner said that this new policy will be in better alignment with NCLB and new definitions for graduation. You may know that NCLB did not address high school graduation in the past. It did so a few years ago. New York State has always been ahead of the game when it comes to high school cohort. Many states don't even address the cohort conversation. In fact, many states will calculate graduation rate by looking at the number of kids who come into the senior year as denominator and those who leave a year later as numerator. The fact is that New York State has been tracking this four-year cohort for a very long time. Right now, only a few months will determine cohort, but that number will shrink to even one day. It makes the job more difficult, but it is better aligned now with what is happening with Washington.
There's two follow-up questions. Is there a way to change that? Who would we talk to? Would it be new Regent Wade Norwood? Or would we have our Committee on Intergovernmental Relations begin to address this because this is, in my mind, unacceptable? I mean, if you want to realistically track our students, you don't do it by one student who stays in the district one day. That's just not the way to do it. So who would we, who do you suggest we talk to to change this?
It's a federal policy issue. The states don't have control of this. In fact, you have many states who are honestly beginning to panic looking at this new requirement. If you wanted to address one, in one group, it would be the federal Senate and the folks in Washington, the US DOE.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions from the superintendent directly related to his report?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one more, and it does relate to that issue. Every year, we struggle to achieve a greater graduation rate. In two year, two and a half years, we've had great success, I think unprecedented success in increasing our graduation rate. I think it's gone up in two and a half years to about 14 percentage points, give or take?
13.
13 percentage points, which is, I don't know, any other district in New York State's 306, 306 urban rural and suburban districts that's ever done that. But the big frustration for me and for many folks is that we have to wait a year for that data to come in, to either instruct further initiatives or to celebrate what we've done or to guide and direct us for future activities. Who should the citizens? We see a lot of citizens here today concerned about military recruitment. We see them concerned about classroom size. Citizens really ought to be getting involved in this too. Who should they and who should we contact about approving how late that data comes in? We just found out what our four-year cohort did that graduated in 2008. Just found it out, right before or right after our 2009 kids graduated. Who should these citizens contact to change this?
It's the Board of Regents and the commissioner. I know it is something they're looking at. In fact, this was a topic of conversation yesterday as well too. And what they said was that last year, the numbers, I believe, came out in September. This year, it came out in June. So they said they've made improvements. But it is their goal to try and push this out as quickly as possible. I mean, there's quite a bit of challenge around making sure that you're tracking every single student because you have these cohort issues and trying to find every student, making sure that you're auditing what is happening in different cities, that no one is lying. I know folks at times attack about data integrity. There's quite a bit of auditing that goes on behind the scenes, even where state individuals come in and descend on local schools. We've had audits done, for instance, at Marshall, where the state actually walks in and goes through every single student transcript. So by the time they get done to all of that, it is a time-consuming process. My hope is to be able to go back to what we used to have many years ago. It was by December, we knew the numbers. I know it's still four, five months past the August graduation, but if they can strive to provide that to us by the end of the calendar year, I think that'd be a great improvement. But they are aware of the fact that we do an autopsies a year later. The other piece, if I may add to your question, Commissioner, is the fact that the state testing for ELA mathematics, you may know in the audience, is being pushed to April and May. It used to be January, from January on and March throughout, throughout the spring and winter because of the challenges of testing in January in places like Rochester. They're pushing now for all three-day testing to happen in the high school piece between the end of April to the end of June. So it's gonna present a greater challenge for us as local districts to grade these because we have a shorter turnaround time. The question we had, of course, was, now that you're gonna get these the end of, the end of April through June, will we get our results early enough? In other words, we'll have to wait until December to get the three-day testing. The response, and I don't disagree with it completely, is that we shouldn't be waiting for those, those results to inform our work as teachers and educators, that we should be able to do that in interim way. So our benchmark assessments we put in place this year are very aligned to the state test. Will give us timely information, but in terms of the accountability to the community, we're hoping, of course, that those, those information will come out quickly enough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. We'll now move on to committee reports, starting with the Audit Committee and Commissioner Williams.
Mr. President, the Audit Committee met today at 5:30 with our outside auditors, Freed Mexic and Bataglia, to review the audit plan for the district's financial audit for the year ending June 30, 2009. We also reviewed the Office of the Auditor General's audit plan. The audit plan identifies the work that will be performed by the Office of the Auditor General for the 2009-2010 fiscal year. The Audit Committee recommends that the Board of Education accept the audit plan for the year 2009-2010, and I'd like to make a motion for the board to accept the 2009-2010 audit.
It's a motion by Commissioner Williams to select the 2000, accepted 2009-2010 audit plan, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any discussion on the audit plan? Members should have received this in their packet a few weeks ago and had it reviewed.
Yeah, I did, I did want to note, special thanks to Ms. Henry Wheeler, to Commissioner Williams, and to the law, the accounting firm, Freed Mexic and Bataglia, Mex and Bataglia. Last year, before this contract was granted, I expressed some concerns about the lack of minority representation in that particular firm and the lack of having vendors that might bid on this contract. But it is, I'm glad to see that in the report, they have taken that issue into account, and I look forward to further reports that show continued progress in terms of minority hiring and diversity in the workforce. Thank you.
President Evans, if I could just piggyback on that, one of the criticisms I had about us as a district, if you recall, the superintendent is recommending that we close down Franklin's Finance School. And some of the issues that are in this audit plan and report is, is that they can't find persons of color to fill these positions. And so, which says, it speaks to the need of that Franklin Finance School. We need to begin to develop- We need to begin to develop those skill sets right here in the school district so that there is an exposure to our students about the whole field of accounting. And so, I said to the representatives of this firm that we have to do, I'll do just too, and that we would work in cooperation with this firm to be able to identify students, and hopefully, this Board will retain its finance school so that we can prepare our students for these kinds of opportunities, not only locally, but on a global level as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as well as the Auditor General for working on this plan and submitting it to the Board. All those in favor of approving the audit plan for '09-10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one other resolution I'd like to introduce. Should I do it now?
Under the business.
Okay.
And is that concluded your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And Vice President White and the Excellence for Student Achievement Committee.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President. We did not meet during the month of July. We, actually, we have not met yet in the month of July. We're scheduled to meet July 30, here in this building at 5:30 PM. We invite all citizens to attend that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Elliott and the Policy Committee.
Yes, President Evans, the Policy Committee of the whole met on Tuesday, July 21, to discuss one item, the military recruitment policy, and the Board of the Policy Committee of the whole voted to move the policy, military recruitment policy, number 51, what's the number? It escapes me right now, for approval as amended to the full board. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos and the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
No report, as I stated. Next, we will reconvene our meetings in September.
Thank you. In an absence of Commissioner Powell, I have the Finance Committee report. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, July 16, to review the 2009 financial reports and resolutions, Resolutions 51 through 75. The committee seeks a motion to, and the committee also seeks a motion to accept the June 2009 financial report, recognizing that these figures are not yet final because the year in closing has not yet been complete. But my colleagues, you do have the monthly financial report, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the monthly financial reports.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The committee recommends the following review resolutions to the Board for approval, Resolutions 51 through 55, which is for procurement, Resolutions 56 through 60 to address the information management and technology systems, Resolution 61 through 74 to address educational facilities, and Resolution 75 to address office administration needs. The Finance Committee decided to advance without recommendation Resolution 2009-10-75, Contract with Education Resource Strategies, and a resolution to approve a contract award to Aramark as the food service management company for the district. Committee members received a presentation and engaged in extensive discussion regarding the food service management company resolutions. Members of the Finance Committee voted unanimously to decide to advance this resolution to the Board without recommendation until additional information and documentation is provided. As you know, colleagues, you should have received more information on the Aramark Food Services contract. We won't be voting on that tonight. Special meeting will be held on July 28 to discuss the Aramark resolution, and I believe we have some speakers that have already signed up to speak at that meeting. Also, the Superintendent, because he wants to make sure that Board members are extremely comfortable with Resolution Number 75, which is the ERS resolution, has asked that we pull that resolution until Tuesday or a later time, when Board members can feel they got all their questions answered about ERS. I know there were also some questions in our study session yesterday about that resolution. So we'll pull that resolution today. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on August 20, 2009, at 6:00 PM. The only thing I want to report briefly, and it's just a thanks, and it should come as a gift resolution next month, is the Monroe County Fair has donated over 1,000 hats, scarves, and mittens to the Rochester City School District. They made that presentation on Sunday at the fair, and they're going to bring that stuff here to, here to you at Central Office Superintendent, to be distributed in the customer service centers before the beginning of schools in conjunction when we give out the bookbags and other things. So I want to thank the Monroe County Fair for their generous gifts and all of the volunteers and for submitting, I believe it's something like 36 boxes of hats, gloves, and mittens for our students. So I want to thank them for that. Also, I would just remind my colleagues that we have a meeting next week, as was mentioned, July 28, to deal with food services, and then a Board Governance Committee meeting of the whole, deal with personnel issues. We will now move to the consideration of resolutions. We have Human Resources Resolutions 1 through 50. Resolution Number 12 needs to be pulled, I'm sorry, tabled, because the Superintendent wants to brief us on that at another time, possibly in executive session. So if I can have a motion to table Resolution Number 12, we will do that. Can you take a look at it? Yes.
So moved. I mean, we don't know anything, but I'm sure he will tell us later on.
Second.
Thank you. Table move straight to a vote. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that resolution is tabled. So now, my colleagues, we are considering Resolutions Numbers 1 through 50, which are the Human Resources Resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 1 through 50, with the exception of Resolution Number 12, which has been tabled.
Mr. President, there was a speaker who spoke earlier today, Mr. Dietz. He had asked for an opportunity to be heard or to have his particular personnel situation discussed in executive session. I think, given his request, I think it's reasonable. I don't know logistically if the administration would prefer to, I don't know if you can know, because 24, folks can't see it out there, but there's hundreds of names, or at least 100 or so names. There's no way to table his particular name because it's part of those names in Resolution Number 24.
You can make an amendment to the resolution to make it a sub-number, A, B, or C, whatever number you decide, if you want to put a number next to his name to have it table for a little date.
I'd make a motion to amend the resolution, allowing for the extraction of Mr. Dietz's name from Resolution Number 2009-10-24, thereby allowing the resolution packet to have a separate resolution, Resolution 2009-10-24A, which would have Mr. Dietz's name attached to it. For my colleagues' attention, Mr. Dietz's name falls, I think on, is it page 12, 14? That would be in the...
School instructors.
School instructors list.
And I would just say that this resolution does have to do with educational law and collective bargaining, so we would need an executive session before we even speak to Mr. Dietz, which we can't, which we can do.
And the only thing I would notice procedurally, we, just for folks out there who don't know, we do talk about personnel issues in executive session. We can't even get into the details of this now, this collective bargaining issues or the facts that relate to Mr. Dietz. But again, I think justice and fairness would require such an extraction, and it doesn't hurt the forward progress of the balance of Resolution 24. I don't, well, he is, Mr. Dietz is on page 14, I believe. He is the third person on the list under school instructors.
So Commissioner White has made a motion to amend the resolutions to add 24A. His motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Any discussion on the resolution on adding 24A? Okay, all those in favor to that amendment with, to adding 24A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. So we have Resolution Number 24A. Would you like to make a motion to table Resolution Number 24A? Vice President White?
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor to table Resolution Number 24A, so we can get more information. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. All those in favor of moving, tabling Resolution 24A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, 24A will be tabled. So we are now voting on Resolutions 1 through 50, with the exception of, please, folks, with the exception of Resolution 24A, which has been tabled, will be 1 through 50, with the exception of 24A and Resolution Number 12.
I have a question.
And, but I see the motion. Do we can get the questions? Can I just have a motion for those, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Campos, and Commissioner Elliott, your question.
In reference to Resolution 24, there was always, and I guess I was just, I've been unclear regarding the exact number of personnel that was going to be terminated. There was questions, talk about 74, or it was just really confusing, particularly when we had speakers to say some other numbers. So I counted up, and if my counting is correct, if my accounting is correct, we have about 170 something or 70.
179.
179 positions that are being abolished. But in the press, we kept hearing, well, it's only going to be 70, or, so I've just been real confused about, but now we're here, we're getting, and I'm not saying I'm going to vote for this, but I just want some clarification, that, you know, it was 70, or it was not going to be that many, and then we could bring people back. Can you clarify this?
Absolutely, Commissioner. We stand by those, by the numbers we've been publishing. It's hard to go into very specifics right here. Wish I had a question, I would have brought the numbers up with me. In fact, weekly, we'll be meeting to talk about those exact numbers. So what you see here does not represent it true in terms of the number of FTEs being reduced. We maintain that the number of individuals in the district who will be displaced will be well under 100, and the number of actual full-time layoffs will be well under 70. And again, I can, again, I have, I can give you a chart that we've been looking at weekly downstairs. Again, I wish you'd ask me the question. How to come up with numbers off my head?
I'm sure you can give some general information.
I can, I can give you specifics, Commissioner, I just, I don't have that in front of me right now. If you want to table this, to choose it, that's fine as well. I can give you those numbers. We'll be meeting and discussing.
No, because I wanted it to be in the public, I wanted to be able to discuss it in the public.
We can do it in the public arena on Tuesday.
Because it's been...
Commissioner, let me, I guess, be clear again. We stand by those numbers. We do not tell lies. We tell exactly what is going on. Excuse me.
Folks, please, this is a public, please, please, ladies and gentlemen, please.
I respect you. Please offer the same. Thank you. We have those numbers, and we can offer them to you. Those numbers go to the Governor's Office. They have gone to the House, the Assembly Ways and Means on a regular basis. We have them. It's, again, it's very difficult to just, top of your head, come up with exact numbers. There's a lot of other HR issues here as well. You may count numbers being abolished, but you not count numbers of hirings as well. We, give you, we'll give you one very specific example. Just about every single elementary school teacher who's being displaced will be rehired as full-time substitutes. So in fact, those without, excuse me.
Folks, ladies and gentlemen, please, I'm really going to ask that we can show some respect here as we go through this meeting. I mean, come on. If we had, if we have, if we had younger students in here, we would not behave like this. We have to show respect so we can continue this meeting. Commissioner Elliott asked the Superintendent a question. Please allow him the chance to respond. Thank you.
Again, thank you. We stand by those numbers. We spend nearly $10 million a year on substitutes. In fact, during the budget process, I believe, was Commissioner Evans who highlighted this issue, 10 million because of teacher absences. That money is being redirected to offer positions. We cannot put those folks as permanent employees in the district because we don't have the budget to do it on an ongoing basis. So there's a lot of misinformation that's pushed, that's pushed out in the public as well. For instance, there was one that was pushed out by the bargaining unit, the RCT, to be very specific, about us letting go of substitutes. We have annual contracts with subs. That's an annual event every single year, which is not part of what would be discussed. The fact is that the actual displacements of people without positions will be minimal, as we've been saying, and once we're done, again, we're still doing staffing until school actually opens, those numbers will be well under 60, well, probably well under 50, again, looking at what may happen in September. But right now, we're projecting the amount of people who will not be employed will be well under 70 in the district. So what you see here is one resolution, but there are others that will be adding. Contract subs are something we do every single year. We've had to rehire special ed teachers in a number of different locations. Again, let me just go back to that one specific one I gave before. Every single elementary school teacher who's being displaced, that's been part of our plan, will be rehired as a contract sub in the district to make sure that people are duly employed. We have a situation, again, I've experienced this a number of times. We've had, in this district, again, some people do not understand the words structural deficit, but the fact is, you have a system where you need 3% to 7% more money every single year just to maintain the same level of services. You cannot run an operation like that. Last year alone, we overhired 181 teachers in this district because of poor processes in the district, which was fixed this year. So when you, when you have that and you have a deficit, you have choices you've got to make. We displaced or removed over 100 people from this building last year. I was attacked when I was on my honeymoon last year because of that, but no one protested at the board meetings because of that. The fact is that we're looking to cut across the board. We do the best we can, we can to make sure we keep as many people employed as possible. So this is one, one dimension of the work. You need to take a look at the entire dimension. We can give you a chart, give you your numbers, we can give you names if you'd like. But again, I don't have that in front of me right now.
Here's my...
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
And then, and then we can decide if we want to...
Here's my issue with it, that the information that has been communicated to the public seemed to be confusing because I'm looking at 179 individuals that we're going to, the positions are going to be abolished, and then I'm hearing that, you know, it's going to be 70 something. Well, I guess I'm just, I'm just not, don't have the confidence. Now, I agree with everything that you said, Mrs. Superintendent, in terms of structural deficits and the financial part of that. I understand that, but I guess where I'm coming from is that we need to be clear of what we're saying, whether we get criticized for it or not. And that's where, I guess, if I'm confused about it, then I know that other people are confused.
Commissioner, I...
Folks, please, please.
Commissioner, I completely agree about being, being clear about the messaging. In fact, you can ask my folks on Cabinet. We've pushed very hard to make the message very simple and very clear. We've not pushed out a press release about this, but whenever the question is asked, we provide the information. Like I said, this is something we've been talking to Ways and Means, as well as the Governor's Office, almost honestly, about four times in five weeks. The Big Five as well has been asking, we've been pushing this information. We have it, we can give it to you. Again, all I say is that I don't have that at the tip of my hand. If you, if the question was asked of us, honestly, yesterday, we could have given that to you today. All we need is a few hours to put it together. We can give you names and numbers. It is something we do. We've been doing this on a regular basis. Whenever the media or anyone asks, we've been very clear about what is happening. We've not said anything. The one thing that we've been very clear about is that we had to reduce the teaching staffing in the district was 199.1, right, John? We've not walked away from that, 199.1. The problem is, many of the names you see here are part-time positions. So three part-time people may equal one full-time employee. One full-time employee. Again, understanding is one issue, and again, I'm not talking to the Commission, perhaps the general public, but understanding and seeking to understand are two different things. And sometimes, some folks do not wish to understand.
Okay, so what we'll do is, so that way we can get, and again, I'm going to ask the audience to be respectful. Again, this is a public meeting. I respect the rights of folks to protest, but please don't interrupt when other folks are speaking. We can have debate, I'm all for it, but we need to be respectful, again. So any other, any other questions for the Superintendent around this? I mean, I would have no problems with tabling that portion until we get, until we get the exact... exact numbers so folks can have clarification. I'll tell you, I don't have any problems with it with the resolutions that they stand, but I also would not have any problems tabling it so that way Commissioner Elliott can get her clarification, and all of us can get clarification. Mr....
I'm ready to vote on it, I don't need...
Commissioner White?
Yeah, there is a, on this particular resolution, there's, for folks who don't have the pack, the yellow packet in front of them, this particular resolution is broken into parts, staff into parts, and it's secondary academic, arts, business, marketing, graphic, arts design, health, and then teachers' names are listed under each category. And so it's a very complex or very involved resolution that includes a whole bunch of people at one particular time. So I personally would advocate for tabling it only till the next meeting, which I think you said is the 20th, 28th, because I have a question, and I got to thank the administration, they were kind enough to spend a considerable amount of time with us because there was some concern about arts teachers and the, how the arts teachers are distributed amongst district schools. And I got to tell you, the administration did a great job and a very honest and forthright job explaining how those teachers are distributed, and one of the things that became pretty clear to me was there's an inequitable distribution of arts teachers. And before you start applauding, let me just say, this is, my words are part of an important deliberative process, which I would not be able to bring to you had the administration not been forthright with us about how those teachers are distributed. For example, Freddie Thomas has six arts teachers, if memory serves me, yet global media that deals with arts, entertainment, news, only has one. And this, to me, strikes in contradiction to, one of the first things Jean-Claude Bressard said to us was equity. I mean, you beat that equity horn loud and clear, drum loud and clear, and I respect you for that. So I would like to, and that was only possible, my information on that, it was only possible because your administration shared that information with us. So I think we do need to go deeper, we do need to go deeper, we do not need to make, I would suggest, we do not need to make the decision today because, quite frankly, at that meeting, with just myself and Commissioner Powell, who was not here today, I'm sure some of my other colleagues would like to see or discuss the numbers that we discussed, and that was just arts. Quite frankly, what I, what we said at that meeting to your staff, Jean-Claude, and I think you were out of town, so you weren't able to attend, was that we want, like you, to see equity, and if we, if we're going to deal with the structural deficit, which I agree we must, 75% of our money, folks, before you applaud or before you boo, is tied up in personnel costs. So the only place, really, where we can have a significant impact in affecting that structural deficit is in personnel costs. But when we do that, but when we do that, we have to be equitable, we have to be fair. And for Freddie Thomas to have six arts instructors and Global to only have one, that strikes me as being inequitable. Here's my only point, I think maybe we need to go deeper into the weeds, and I would move to table.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a motion on the table, there's a motion on the...
60, 120...
There, there, excuse me, ma'am, you're out of order. Again, I will ask.
I'm right.
You may be right. You could be 120% correct, but there's a form in which we need to do that, and it's not now when we're having a meeting and interrupting. So I would ask respectfully, again, not to interrupt. I'll ask one more time, and then otherwise, I'm going to have to ask someone, people to leave if they continue to be disrespectful. I just can't tolerate that. I just can't. So there's a motion on the table by Commissioner White to table. May I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That resolution number 24 is tabled. We will now move to the remaining human resources resolutions, numbers 1 through 50 with the exception of 24, which has been tabled, pending more information, and also resolution 12, which has been, which has been tabled. Any other questions on the remaining resolution?
I have a couple of...
Yes.
I'll be, I'll be...
Commissioner, where you?
On resolution 28, page 24. This has to do, just for a general comment, and this is the development of master schedule for East High School. For one person...
What page is that?
Page 24. Up at the top. It's actually resolution 28, but it's on the, right on the end. It's a, like, for one person, it's a, yeah, and the thing is, we seem to be cutting it close because it's, you know, you're coming down to, the last day is 8/31, school opens on, what, the 2nd? I mean, there's a small window of error, and that's my only sort of caveat of concern there on that one.
If I may, Commissioner, master schedules for high schools, the planning start well in the late spring, into summer. I'm not sure what this individual's title is, but some of them, depending on title, have to require to work X number of days in the summer anyway. So this may be additional to what they already have in terms of the summer work. East is a particular challenge because of the new SLCs going in place, so the work is a bit more difficult than the regular high school. But the fact is, this might be in addition to something he already has as part of his contractual duties anyway.
Okay. And the other one is, the other comment is page 48, resolution 32. It has to do with the, same one. I'm sorry, 49, page 49, resolution 32, and it's the physical restraint workshop. Just, I would ask that, you know, you, whatever techniques that you're either using or looking at, make sure you run it by the general counsel, and if need be, give a demonstration for the board. I'd like to see...
No, no chokes. If I may ask, Ms. Barclay to come up and explain.
Commissioners, we will, that's a error in the typing. We had discussions about this resolution after we reviewed the first set of drafts of resolutions. This is a resolution for the school safety officers to go through therapeutic crisis intervention training. 90% of that training deals with non-physical ways of de-escalating situations or students whose behaviors are starting to accelerate in a classroom or in a hallway. 10% of that training deals with restraint training. We did not feel comfortable asking or having the board approve a resolution dealing with restraint training until we provided additional information to the board about what restraint training is and how it fits into some of the district's other initiatives, including some of the BOSI's work of bringing students back who need more highly specialized programs and services. So we would ask that you approve this resolution, but know that the restraint piece of this therapeutic crisis intervention training will not be conducted this summer. We'll do the 90% that is non-physical.
Okay.
Good.
Why is Kirsten presenting us as opposed to Mr. Sheppard?
Any other questions? Okay.
Oh, that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campos down there, anything? Okay, Commissioner Elliott, anything? Okay, thank you. We will now move to approve resolutions 150 with the exceptions of the tabled, with the exception of the tabled resolutions. All those in favor of 150, with the exception of the tabled resolutions that we'll discuss at length, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott, yes?
3 through 18.
3 through 18.
21 through 23.
21 through 23.
27 through 50.
27 through 50. Okay, thank you, my colleagues, the ayes have it, and we'll get more information on the tabled resolutions. 51 through 55 are procurement and supplies resolutions that went through the finance committee, and you also received in your packets a couple of weeks ago. I'll entertain a motion to approve procurement and supply resolutions, numbers 51 through 55.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President White, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Any questions on resolutions 51 through 55 or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Commissioner, where you?
I'll try to group them. On 51, 52, and 53, for both of these, year over year, there's a 20% increase in costs. I'd like to know, one, what's driving that, and how does the, you know, and given today's economic environment, how does, what argument did the vendor make to justify a 20% increase? And how does, how do we make, how do you make an argument to the staff or to the board to grant that increase, that level of increase?
Mr. Scanlon, is that, is that one of yours? Page 60, 61, 51, 52, and 53?
Right. Yes, 51, 52, and 53.
These are essentially the procurement on alarm systems and the cost of the alarms in addition, the additional responses, cost of escalations in the equipment are all in those amounts, again, allowing us to buy and handle materials for those. The 20% number was a competitive, I'd have to check, but I believe was a competitive bid on that, so that would have been the best bid.
No, these are extensions from...
The previous contracts.
Previous, right.
I don't have, I don't have a specific answer on a 20% increase.
Commissioner, do you have the amounts from last year? We don't have that in front of us, so we don't know.
Yes. For, on 50, 51, it's, it went from about 32 to 40, 35 to 42,000. From 52, it went from about 900,000 to about 1.1 million. And then for 53, it went from...
Is it possible from 35 to 40, there's more services being, Mr. Weecraft?
Board, hi, I'm Gary Smith, Director of Purchasing. We were asked by the Finance Committee over a year ago to give the numbers of how much we actually spend on a contract when we extend a contract, and so the $35,023 is how much we spent last, during the last term of this contract. And the 20% number is the number that we put in as a not-to-exceed number. It was requested by the Finance Committee well over a year ago that they wanted a number in there to not go over, and we've honored that request. However, I will tell you that it's based on available money in the budget, and oftentimes there are grants that might come in that we don't even anticipate. It could bring that total more than $42,000, and at that time, we may have to come back to the board to ask for an increase in these types of contracts. But that's the 20%, is the number that we use as requested by the Finance Committee.
What, the Finance Committee requested a 20% increase?
No, they requested a number not to exceed in the resolution for extensions of contracts, and we have been asked to give what the actual dollar amount spent during that term of the contract, and if we extend it, we have been given a 20% leeway to not exceed that for the next term of the extended contract.
So Gary, what you're saying is that the 42,000 is not what's going to go to the vendor, it's the maximum amount allowed by the resolution?
It's the maximum amount that we're allowed in this resolution. We will have to come back to the board if we anticipate spending more than $42,000 on this particular resolution.
So it's a cushion that's built into the resolution, because if we say $35,023, if it goes $35,024, we have to draw a new resolution. So the Finance Committee allows a 20% cushion in the resolutions for these procurement contracts.
Right, we cannot anticipate, in all honesty. A lot of these are repairs for security cameras. If a security camera breaks, we will replace it, so it's unanticipated that the Finance Committee has agreed to.
Okay.
Yeah, for, for the first one, but the other, like, 52, though, it's, these are all supplies that are related to, this looks like a pre-K. Like, it's all...
Right, last year, with these companies, and we bid this out, it's a discount off catalog pricing, and we spent $912,190 for early education, early childhood learning material, and again, we cannot anticipate exactly how much we are going to spend in this term of the contract, so the Finance Committee has allowed us a cushion of up to 20% to include in the resolution so that if we do have unanticipated costs or unanticipated revenue coming from grants, that we do not have to continue to come back to the board for, and ask for an increase. Keep in mind that these are contracts that we bid out, and these are the lowest responsible bidders to the bid process.
And Commissioner Elliott, who serves on the Finance Committee?
Yeah, that probably has happened when I was not there, that we, that was voted on, because during my attendance at the meetings, what we had agreed upon was to look at the historical data for the last three years and determine what the not-to-exceed amount would be based on that three-year historical data. So this is something new to me. This could have been, like I said, a meeting that I missed that, as to the reason why that this 20% is in, I voted on when I was not there.
But Commissioner, if I may, if I may add, again, we don't, we're not going to go out and give 42 or 50,000 dollars to a company that is billed within the resolution to allow some leeway. With resolution number 52, for instance, if a new CBO were to be contracted as part of the pre-K program in the district, we would not be able to provide the kinds of furniture, mats, etc., for the classrooms without waiting a month to come back for a new resolution to buy equipment for four and five-year-olds in the district. So what this does, it provides us with some leeway to make some decisions, again, to allow for us to make some things on the ground as the world turns.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, and what we don't get an opportunity to see, though, is the bills that have been, the payments that have been made specifically for these vendors, you know, we give the 33, we're talking about 33,000 and we don't use it. I mean, we can't verify.
Commissioner, you...
That it's, that this person, you know, unless we, you know, specifically ask for the amount that has been paid for this particular vendor. So from our perspective, there's not these checks and balances from the board level.
There is actually, Commissioner, because you do have another team. We have an internal control system, we have to respond as well to the State Controller's Office, the City of Rochester, but the board also has an internal audit team that looks at what we spend and why we're spending it. In fact, we had a committee of the whole just met and talked about the policies and the audits for next year. Bottom line is, we have a number of checks and balances to look at these kinds of issues. We try very, very hard not to be irresponsible with taxpayer dollars, but bottom line is, we have internal controls, the board has controls for the administration, and the City of New York has controls for the board and for the administration.
Anything else on 51 through, 51 through 55?
Well, not, well, just on the last three, just 20% number is, you see, 5% or 6%, but 20% is a big number. And more often than not, what happens, I mean, historically, I'm sure you see, someone says, well, you can spend up to a million, guess what? At the end of the year, you're going to spend a million.
Commissioner, if I may, first, you can pick it back. We don't do that, honestly, Commissioner. I know in some not-for-profits, you look to spend every dollar possible, but with the controls that are placed in place, put in place with a new CFO, a new administration, we try very hard, again, not to do that. If the board is not comfortable with a 20% leeway, then the committee certainly has a right to lower it to 6%, if that's what it wishes to do. But understand, though, that it may impact classrooms, it may impact our ability to respond in a timely fashion to the needs of our schools. If a camera is broken, if there is a theft, if there is a fire, we may have to wait a month to be able to repair something if we've exceeded or come close to that 6%. So I believe this was done with due diligence by the Board of Education, by members of the Finance Committee. So before, again, if the policy wishes, if the board wishes to change the policy, we're fine, but understand that there are some repercussions and some issues that we'll have as an administration to be able to respond in a timely fashion to the needs of schools. When you have a storm, when you have a wind condition, a fire, we had recently, a school without walls, we have to respond as quickly as possible to make sure our schools can run. run.
Would I add?
If I could add, there are really, in my mind, three checks and balances. Number one is the bid process, which goes to the lowest responsible bidder. Number two, there's a budget process, which we do not issue a purchase order unless the funds are pre-encumbered on the requisition process. And so if the funds are budgeted for, that's the only way that a requisition would be let with our PeopleSoft system. And number three is there's a claims audit, which checks every invoice and matches it to the purchase order and to, and to the receiving.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, the issue here is not with, with the checks and balances. My issue is that last year, you spent a million. And given the current environment where inflation is, from last year to this year, is nil, they're saying, well, our vendors are saying we need, or we want a 20% leeway. We spent 20% more this year than we spent last year. And if, if, if we are indeed under a, you know, dire financial straits, then a 20% increase is just not, it's not prudent.
Commissioner, again, we are responding to Board policies and Board, Board, Board systems put in place. This is what we've done. If the system is not one you wish to be in place, then we respectfully ask that the Board changes the policies so we adapt to it. What we did was to, to, to work with what was established by the Board of Education.
Can I just, if I'm...
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this, this topic was actually discussed at length at a Board meeting last year, and maybe we can find, find it to refresh some of my colleagues' memories. But I, I think that if we, if, Commissioner Williams, you, you wish to seek to change the policy, we, we can also look at exploring that also.
But let, let me also say this, because it's, because it, the impression is left that the Board is at fault. What happens is, the district comes to the Board and presents us with recommendations. And so because this Board wants to trust the district, that's why it approves the, the policy, because we believe, or this Board believes, that you have the experience. But you, you can't say that, you can't blame the Board for this when the district is the one that's providing us with the information so that we can enact the right policy. So it's not the Board who's at fault here.
Commissioner, we, we're not blaming the Board of Education.
I want to be clear about that.
All I'm saying, to be, to be crystal clear, is that we are following...
And to be crystal clear.
We are following Board policy. The Board is the one, two members of the Board right now are raising questions about the 20% leeway or the 40% leeway in some other instances. What we're saying is that these were established because of arguments we made around operations. We understand that this is the governing body of the district. We understand that this is a policy board, and, and its job is to make sure that we stay within the frames of policies. So as operators, as implementers, we understand the issues on the ground, and we, we bring them up to the Board of Education and say, look, for us to be able to do our job well and to respond to the needs of our children and our teachers and principals, this is what we need, and we ask for the policy. Again, if the Board feels that this is no longer viable, we can make the counterargument that we need this. But if the Board feels that we do not, it certainly has a right to change it from 20% to 6%. But again, all I, all I'm saying is that to do that, we will argue, based on the experts who are in the field doing this work, that there are consequences to certain decisions. So if we do go to 6%, and there is an issue, we may ask, again, at special times, for special meetings, to pass the resolutions so we can enter contracts, so we can respond to the needs of our, of our schools.
Commissioner Williams, any other questions on these resolutions?
Yep, I, I do. Yes, I do. On 56 and 57, again, on these, they're...
Hold on, we're just on 51 and 55 right now?
Oh, okay, 51 and 55, then, no, that's, no, no others.
Okay. Anything else on 51 and 55?
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. I just wish I would have known of these concerns earlier, so that way I could have, we could have worked to address them before we got here. Are there any others on 51 through 55? Okay. All those in favor on 51 through 55, please say aye.
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 Any opposed on 51 through 55?
52 and 54.
Okay, thank you. And I would just ask, I, I think Commissioner Williams made some, made some great points. If we could, Commissioner Williams, maybe discuss this. I don't know if the Audit Committee is the venue or wherever, but I, I think that we should continue this discussion definitely in, in the Finance Committee.
Okay.
And I'll entertain a motion for 56 through 60. For purposes of discussion, may I have a motion on 56 through 60?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Questions and comments around 56 through 60?
One of the same questions. On, on 56 and 57, have some fairly, some pretty hefty increases year over year. For example, 56, last year, the spending was 119. This year, you're asking for 153. For 57, last year, we spent 85,000. This year, you're asking for 197,000. Which is, what's...
Tim?
What's driving the cost here?
Mr. Kleiby?
Sorry, Commissioner, I don't have the detail in front of me that you're looking at, but I think Achieve 3,000 was 56, is that correct?
Achieve 3,000 last year was 119. Well, yes, it's 56, Resolution 56.
Achieve 3,000 is a licensing, yearly licensing. We, we re-license this, these schools every year. It's not perpetual. Our increase for Achieve 3,000 is to add additional schools to our current cohort.
Right, adding three, three schools.
Correct.
If I look at the number of schools you had last year, it came out to about $5,000 per school. With the three additional schools you're going to add this year, it comes out to like 11,000, right? And all you're doing is just adding additional licenses.
Well, we're adding, we had last year, we had, one, two, three, four, five, 17, 18, 19 schools. This year, we're adding a bilingual component for nine and 22 and School 52.
Uh huh.
So I know, I know it's an increase, Commissioner, I don't know...
It's not, it's not, it's not a straight linear increase. The bilingual component may not be the exact same cost of what you have in the other schools?
They are, they are different components. The bilingual component is a different component. It's new to us, and it is a new product for Achieve 3,000. So it's not, it is not a linear increase. And it does depend, as our licensing per component increases, our price comes down. As we add schools, our price per school comes down. So if we were adding schools in our regular component, our straight component, you might see a better break for our licensing there. But in a new component, bilingual, we're going to pay a higher price because we have fewer schools and it's a new product for the company.
Okay. And what about for Compass? Compass is, I mean, it's a really big increase.
Compass is perpetual licensing. We own Compass licensing when we purchase it. So for the schools that we have listed as previously owned or previously used schools for Compass, those we only pay for a service contract, which ensures that we are going to be able to take the upgrade in licensing for free if the product improves over time. What we're purchasing this year are, are to add four additional schools. This will be a one-time purchase price, but that is the price, the bulk of what you're seeing on that purchase, and I think it is for that particular line.
Here you're going from 85 to 197.
Well, 197 includes service contracts of $36,000 and professional development of $24,000, I believe. So we have licensing, we have service contracts, which, as I said, is kind of like a insurance policy that as we own these licensing, when they improve their product, we get that product upgrade. That's our, that's kind of our insurance policy for the upgrade. And these products do change. They change every year. And without that, we'd have to re-license the product completely to gain the new product, or we, we continue to use the old suite of products, which becomes outdated.
But there's no ceiling in terms of how much we would either be willing to pay or how much that we would, that they would charge? I mean, once we, it seems like, you know, once we have it, then they have us. Last year, we paid 85, and now they're saying, well, guess what? Well, the product went out at 197.
Again, 141 is our licensing cost, and that is to add four new buildings. Last year, we added schools as well. So that is based on the number of schools that we are adding, Commissioner. And once we add those, we own that licensing for those schools. If we add no more schools next year, all we will pay for is any professional development services from the company that we require and the service contract, which gives us the insurance for the upgrade should their product improve.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. So we will own Compass. It will belong to the district.
We do own...
It's going to own the software.
We will own the software licensing for the schools that we have listed here, that's correct.
Too bad we can't own a company to get some revenue from that.
That's right. Then we could be charging ourselves.
So, so the only, so next year around this time, the only fees that we could see, should see are the professional development?
And service contracts.
Okay.
And, and if, that's if we do not enter into any more additional schools, or we do not bring in another component of Compass Learning to our, our...
Dr. Kleiby, is that the intervention program for, like, schools like 17, kids who have lead poisoning, et cetera?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the intervention tools that we have, technology tools, mainly an elementary and a bilingual program intervention tool.
What this program does, if I'm, if I'm correct, is that many of our kids will come to schools with these kinds of, of issues. This program allows them to be able to learn and succeed like a regular ed student.
That's correct. It gives us that during the day at school. The great thing about both Compass and Achieve is that students are using this program at home after school. It's web-based, they can use it anytime, they can use it during vacation. We have a lot of participation, students during the summer, vacation, Saturdays, and after hours, and we track all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on 56 through 60? Any other, anything else on 56 through 60? 56 through 60? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of 56 through 60, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yes, all of them.
Okay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 61 through 74 are educational facilities resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 61 through 74.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell, second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Questions, comments, concerns around 61 through 74?
I have questions also.
Okay, yes.
And I'll, I'll lump these, 64 and 65.
65 is... Who's discussing that?
Yep, 61 through 74.
That's 75.
64 and 65.
Yep.
Lump those together. These have to do with energy savings costs. And I think these relate to the green schools program, if I'm not mistaken. Anyway, we're, we're spending $50,000 for the, for the Alliance to Save Energy, another 175 for day automation systems. Question is, how much money are we saving each year? Because when I look at the numbers, you know, we're spending over $200,000 to put these systems in place, the savings per year is a lot less than that.
The Alliance to Save Energy program is an educational program. That's where we go into the schools, and each school that participates, they start clubs essentially. There was just, we had a, an event here, awards, about a month ago.
Right.
The students look at energy savings initiatives, and then they keep track of them. My understanding is that the 58,715 is fully self-sustaining, that the, that the programs offset the costs, but I'll verify that for you.
Well, with these two, when I, when you look at both the, the program write-up, these two are linked, both the Alliance to Save Energy and the Day Automation Systems.
Well, the Day Automation System is for, to maintain the software for environmental control for the buildings. That's the, the HVAC control system, so it's, it's the computer system that maintains the heating and cooling.
Mr. Stephen, Commissioner?
These were, when you look at this...
They both have to do with saving energy, but one is a, is a training program with kids, the other one is actually controls the system for heating and ventilation.
Yeah, the second one's a maintenance contract.
That's all the green schools, right?
No.
At least the write-up that you hear, that I got.
Yeah. The, the computer systems allows us to maintain, the other one is, this is a training program for kids around, around green schools, it's an education program. One is a maintenance contract that allows us to maintain certain temperatures in, in office buildings and schools. The other one is, is a program to educate young people at schools around green schools, around energy saving.
Okay, but the automation says to provide software, hardware, and technical assistance in the maintenance of our energy system.
Yes, that's right.
Excuse me, one second. If you want, just hold that thought for one second. Commissioner Elliott just told me that it's almost past 8:30, so I, I need a motion to extend, after 8:30. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams, go ahead.
So this is not a, an energy management or an energy saving system?
It, it's an energy management system that, that controls the building. The energy management system is a, is a common term for a system that turns things off at night, turns the lights off, manages the indoor air. We take indoor air into the buildings during the day. At night, that, when the kids are no longer there and the building's no longer occupied, that stops. So it's an energy management system, but it's, it's a computer system that all the buildings have. There's a computer on the wall, it can be controlled remotely, and this is for the maintenance of the computer system.
Okay, so for the 158, questions? What are we getting for 158, 175,000? Is there some, what's the, what's the benefit? I know what the cost is, but what's the benefit?
It's proprietary software to the, to the computer company, and I forget what day automation, there's a, it's a local company that maintains it, that it's a national product. I can't remember the, the name of the product right now. But it's to maintain the software, to do upgrades on the system during the year. Changes happen in the building, those all have to get captured in that automation system. We have failures with the system, so the technicians need to come, and they may need to come in the middle of the night. This is to maintain that, that computer system.
And I would argue, without that system, Commissioner, our electric bills would be a lot higher than they are right now. I'm sure we can, we can quantify to a certain extent exactly how much money we actually save every single year. When you walk out of a building or kind of a room, the lights go out after a certain amount of time. So a lot of that, including when the heat comes on before kids come in the schools in the winter, all that is controlled centrally. It's, it's a phenomenal system that I've not really seen in many districts across the country.
Yes, and that's, and that's what I'm trying to get at. So we spent 175,000, and you're saying our electric bills are less, our energy bills will be less than they would be otherwise? What's that number? That's what I'm looking for.
Sure, we'll, we'll get to...
We can get that to you.
Sure.
Commissioner, exactly. I mean, if you, again, email us, we can get, or ask, we can give you the information, if we have it.
Thank you. Any others? And just a quick question. Are, are green school, is the green school initiative in all of our schools? You know, they did a presentation here...
It's in, it's in most of our schools. John, is it in, now all of them, but in most of our schools, right? The green schools initiative?
Which, we're going to where? To which one?
Oh, no, we're still on the same resolution.
Which ones, to which ones?
Oh, no, I'm asking about...
74.
74.
Okay. Can I, I have a couple other questions.
Okay.
I don't remember the number between 10 and 15.
Oh, okay.
Of the schools that were represented last month.
Okay, so, so the schools that were represented last month, those are the only schools that are, okay. Thank you. Commissioner White and then Commissioner Williams had some others on 61 through 74.
Yeah, just really quickly, on this, this system that Commissioner Williams was asking about, without regard to whether we save costs or not, we would have to have this system, would we not? I mean, it's like a thermostat in a house. I mean, we, we couldn't, we couldn't survive, I mean, we could survive without it, but we would need it whether we lose money on it or whether we save money on it, right?
Yeah, it, it, there's a comfort factor. It maintains the comfort of the building. The building that we're in has digital control, and it, and it's standard and customary in commercial buildings and schools.
I mean, so, so a certain extent, perhaps it's a bit misleading to package it as part of an energy-saving program. We, we need this to, to live in this techno, technological age. I mean, this is a comfort level that we have in our homes, but you've got a very complex series of buildings that have to be managed.[1762.75]
Right. I just want that clarification. Thank you.
And Commissioner Williams, you had others on sixty-one through seventy-four?
Yes, on seventy-three, Resolution seventy-three, there's a chart, and there's the third item from the bottom for Charlotte High School. The original budget amount was about half a million, and the amended amount came to about one-point-three. Final amount, one-point-three million. And what's driving the cost? Or what happened there? Does it change in scope or what?
Yeah, I don't know. This is a final payment that's for a project that occurred a while ago. I'll have to find out and get back to you.
And then the last one is Resolution seventy-four. It's unclear what we're being asked to approve here or even the amount. And it looks like, on the chart, it's for two-hundred-and, an additional amount of, additional rent of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Okay? Was that?
This is for, this is actually not a lease that the Facilities Department maintains. It's through a grant, through...
Adult Ed?
Yeah, Adult Ed. It's Hart Street. It's separate from all of our other leases because it's paid for through a grant, but I do know that the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is for the common areas of Hart Street. It's the maintenance part of common area, but I don't know much more than that, so. Paul Burke maintains that.
Well, here's a problem. Because last year, well, this lease was signed in oh-seven for seventy-seven thousand dollars per month. Last year, for whatever reason, came back to the board, he got an additional amount, additional rent of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per year for the next five years. Okay? And now it looks like coming back again, we're additional two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the next five years. So, what it says is, the original amount was seventy-seven thousand per month, or, say, ninety thousand dollars, nine-hundred thousand dollars a year, okay, for the first year. Then we added another half a million, another two-fifty, okay? And now we're adding another...
Yeah, this is paid for through a grant. It's a pass-through, and I'm not entirely sure what the specifics are. We don't manage that piece. That's a separate lease.
Yeah. Commissioner, what's difficult, again, I've said this at past board meetings, what's difficult about this kind of process is that everyone who manages everything is not here. Paul Burke, as you can see, is not, is not in the audience tonight. He's much more familiar with adult education and the funding stream from New York State. We can certainly get the answers for you. I'm sure there is a sense here, and we are moving to move all leases under one division, but historically, it's not been that way in this district. Adult Ed is funded and controlled, they own funding in the district. We're looking to change that. We've been working to change it, actually, including the fact that the boards, internal auditors, have asked them to actually even help us look at what they do to begin to sort of unpack the work at thirty Hart Street. We certainly can get the answers for you, but if, again, if we had these before, we could give you the answers now.
Well...
It's hard to respond, you know, without knowing the specific questions perhaps ahead of time, because some of these are quite technical and...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and at times you ask very specific questions, rightly so, but again, if perhaps a couple days ago, we had a question, could we give you the exact answers? If you want to table this as well for Tuesday, and I'm more than happy to come back with the answers for you.
This one I'd like to table, because I think they're not clear.
Which one is that? What's that one, Commissioner?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four? Okay. You got any, you want to make that motion, Commissioner?
Motion to table Resolution seventy-four.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor of tabling seventy-four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and if we can just get those answers in writing, and if you can just write those up, or...
If it's possible, Commissioners, sometime tomorrow morning, if we can get the exact questions, and we'll give you the exact answers by close of business Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe Commissioner Lee, I mean, Madam, she said, Sugarhead, you don't want to be with us, has captured those questions for us.
Can I?
Commissioner Elliott?
I think that, Mr. Superintendent, you probably need to have those people here who we may have questions regarding these resolutions. We're not going to always be able to send it via email, or we come up with different questions. So, it would be helpful for us, if we've got to vote on this, that whatever resolutions are going to be presented to us to vote on, that you have that staff at this meeting. I would recommend that, because again, we may not think of everything.
Yeah, Commissioner, just, I'm sorry, I won't be long, Mr. President. We have to live by these things called contractual obligations with employees. For Paul Burke, for instance, is an ASAR member, I cannot require him to be here. My SCG folks are sitting here, my cabinet is here, their managerial and their general employees, contractual employees have certain hours. I'm sure Paul would be here if I asked him to be, if I know what the questions were. I mean, he's, he works very hard, but the fact is, I don't always know which person, what questions, and some of these folks cannot work twelve hours a day.
And we're not paying anybody extra to come to board meetings.
But maybe we should look at the ASAR contract and have that as one to negotiate and put to the contract.
I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of that. Anything else on sixty-one through seventy-four? With the exception of seventy-four, which is going to be tabled, we're going to table seventy-four until Tuesday. So, all those in favor of sixty-one through seventy-three, with the exception of seventy-four, which will be tabled, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Sixty-one through sixty-six.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions number seventy-five through, seventy, seventy-five through, I'm sorry, seventy-five is tabled, seventy-six through eighty-nine.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, through ninety, seventy-six through ninety.
So moved.
There's a second? Second by Commissioner Campbell. Questions around seventy-six through ninety? Now, I'll just say that eighty-eight, eighty-nine are gifts. We appreciate those. And also eighty-six is a gift, as is eighty-three, and eighty-four and eighty-five, and I'll read out the names of those gifts after we approve them. Any other questions around seventy-five to eighty-nine?
I have a couple. I had a couple, I have one on seventy-seven, I don't know whether, and this is sort of a follow-up on Commissioner Campbell's question.
Go ahead. You go first. All right. What, well, because one of the questions I had asked was, you know, we have the IGN, we have communications staff, and I understand, looking at the response to the question from the newsletter was, in essence, it pays for translation, it pays for production, it pays for distribution. So, the sixty-four thousand is, it's a good deal for all of that. What I'm curious about is, who does this go to? Because I know that it's probably, I don't know if it's a publication that's within the district, or if it's something that's to the community. What's the purpose of the sixty-four thousand, and what are we going to get for it in terms of communicating our message, or what is it?
Sure. If I make a mission, I'm actually going to expand my answer for your question. One that we've been looking at, again, to save, to save costs, last year, in the central reorganization, we actually lost half of our web master positions. We saved a hundred thousand dollars and outsourced the creation of a new website, which should be launched in a couple of weeks for about thirty thousand dollars. We do the same thing with Student First Newspaper. It's actually a newspaper that we used to publish in-house, and if you remember, last year, it only came out once because of capacity and time, et cetera. So, we've outsourced the publication of our newspaper. This pays for three pieces, three additions. This company actually has reporters, photographers. We give them the stories, they write them and take the pictures, so you begin to see the first one will be published. I was hoping actually for this week, but very, very soon, the first series. So, you're going to see a newspaper that will go to internal staff, community, business, churches, it's going to go across the city of Rochester as well as around the county, a lot of wonderful stories about our schools. So, it is the Student First Newspaper, now outsourced, now called the Rochester Educator Newsletter. It's actually a newspaper. We actually got this best practice from, help me, John, Springfield, Massachusetts. We saw one from them, it's amazing newspaper, bright and colorful, and instead of us doing it in-house and incurring the cost, so this is less than what we paid internally, and we'll be able to reach out to a much larger audience. I believe they also mail as well.
I'm doing it. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams.
Well, I sort of share the same concerns that Commissioner Campbell has, because we, you know, we spent a lot of money on the IGN three, and...
On the...
The IGN three.
The IGN.
Well, the computerized printing system from zero, and we're still contracting out, we're still sending work out to the outside, the IGN.
Commissioner, this is much more than printing. This is actually publishing, producing, writing, the entire thing. In other words, we do almost nothing. In other words, we pitch the stories, we collect the information, we tell them, we want to write a story about this. They have a team of reporters that actually do it for us. This is something you begin to see more and more across the country with districts, moving these internal operations to save money and get a better product. I mean, for instance, we used to pay two-hundred thousand dollars to two webmasters in-house here. Now, we only have one, and the cost of, we designed a website, which you'll see very soon, is only about thirty thousand dollars versus the two FTEs that we had in the past.
But if the, if the strategy is to go, is to use that model, I mean, you know, why spend all the money that we spent on an IGN three? It's a...
Because again, we, the IGN three is just printing. We do a lot of printing in the district. This is a newspaper that we're publishing, so it's not just the printing. We still need the printing, we still do a lot of it in the district for testing and other things that we do for schools in the district. This is, again, is, was a small part of the printing operation. In fact, last year, like I said, we only published this once.
Okay.
This time, you'll see three times next year, much more professional, and again, reaching a wider audience.
But I'll bet if we, we could hire graphic designers locally, we could print it in-house, and we can have an outside firm distribute it, it'd probably come out a lot cheaper than...
I would disagree. I would disagree, Commissioner.
Less than sixty-four thousand? Hold on now.
Sean Claby.
It's just, little graphic design, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Petronio's designee is here, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to hear it?
We actually have the first edition, which is going, being mailed out to families this week, I believe, and we have some downstairs if you would like to take a look.
So, we're asking you to approve this, and it's already been paid for?
No.
No, 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 no. The sixty-four thousand pays for next year.
For next year.
The one, the one for, the one that's being published this year, it's already been approved.
Right, this is for two thousand nine, two thousand ten. We already approved two thousand eight, two thousand nine last year.
Thank you.
So, we approved this last year. We approved the first iteration of the contract for one year last year. This is the second year of the contract.
One addition was, is being published now. This is for next year's, next school year.
Any other questions on seventy-five through eighty-nine?
I have two others.
Yes.
Just on seventy-nine, well, on seventy-nine, I'm going to abstain on seventy-nine. However, you know, why can't we, why can't we identify homeless students as opposed to contracting that out? And I would think that we would have, we'd be in a much better position to identify students who are homeless, because we have the records internally.
Which seventy-nine are you talking about, Commissioner?
Resolution seventy-nine.
Anyone from Gladys's shop here? No? Cause it got injured. This is not to identify, Commissioner, if you read the resolution, it talks about, I believe, working with homeless students through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act, Assistance Act. This, you know, Center for Youth is a youth development service program. This is about identifying students who are homeless. We can do that by just looking at their addresses, but this is actually to work with them through the Office of Adult and Career Education Services, and this is funded through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Youth Grant. This is not about identifications, it's about working with these families.
But the resolution says to identify youth living in homeless situations.
Perhaps it's badly written, Commissioner, but again, identifying someone as homeless is not something, something that can be done by looking at an address.
Vice President White? You know, this sort of overlaps with the last, the examination of the last resolution we were looking at. I mean, you couldn't hire somebody at thirty thousand dollars to do this kind of work. This is work that requires a certain level of expertise, and even if you could hire somebody, you'd certainly pay them more than thirty thousand dollars in salary and benefits. The other thing that I point out, and it's not a determining factor, but it's a grant. But once again, with respect to this resolution, the other one, you couldn't possibly pay somebody on staff, a communications or graphics person, a reporter, to put together three publications, three issues of the Rochester Educator, nor could you, and we don't have the expertise in-house, and nor could you hire somebody with the expertise to go, this is a, the homeless population, the homeless issue is not something that the district is an expert in, but everybody knows Elaine Spall and her organization, they got good people over there, they know what they're doing. You gotta have experts, and here's the thing, at thirty thousand dollars...
Benefits alone, Commissioner, thirty thousand dollars.
You just, yeah, the benefits alone. So, again, I could see why you might want to look at this and say, how are we spending our money, or how are we even spending grant money? But if you really examine it, thirty thousand dollars to bring some expertise to look at a critical issue like homelessness, at sixty-four thousand dollars to get our message out with respect to what we're doing, you can't spend this kind of money and have this kind of success. You just can't.
What's the expertise?
What's the expertise?
Trying to determine whether someone's homeless. Someone says...
Oh, Commissioner Williams, you can't, you can't be serious about that. You cannot be serious in asking that question. Homelessness is a national epidemic, and the causes for it are varied. It's the economy that we have, it's mental health issues, it's domestic violence. It is not something that any teacher in this room could do on their own. You have to have expertise. It's a very serious issue, and it's very complex, and we are blessed to have an organization to do it for thirty thousand dollars. This is a very serious issue. We can't just give this to anybody.
Commissioner, if I may read the resolution, I believe if you continue, it says to identify youth living in homeless situations as defined by the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, and eliminate barriers to school enrollment, attendance, and graduation. So, it's just much more than identifications, it's about working with kids and getting them to graduation, kids who are living in homeless situations, and as a city, we have a growing, growing population.
You know, I served on, I'm on Catholic Family Citizens Board of Directors, and I served on their Homeless and Housing Panel Subcommittee for years, and not to knock the district, the district really had no idea on how to handle homeless kids, and many of them were written off, not given the extra services they needed because they would miss class, and they would miss it for very good reasons, particularly seventeen and eighteen-year-olds, because they were at an age where they weren't getting the help because they're younger, because they're not as young as a kid, but still at an age where many folks thought, because they were seventeen, eighteen, they should be on their, on their own. So, I know just from, just from serving in that capacity, the district just didn't do a good job in terms of identifying homeless students and correcting them. So, I'm assuming that this resolution seeks to help correct that from years past.
Let me just say, the reason why I'm so hot in this issue is, years as a prosecutor, even today, I was in the courthouse, and this is actually, we ought to be doing more on this issue, quite frankly, whether we're contracting it out, but I don't think folks should take this situation very lightly. If you sit in any courtroom, you will see the connection between issues like domestic violence, substance abuse, the economy. This is a very, very serious issue, and it deserves at least thirty thousand dollars. It certainly deserves the expertise of the folks at the Center for Youth Services. This particular resolution gets my wholehearted support, and I'm glad, finally, this very important issue, which quite frankly, for most folks, this is more important than the budgetary issues, this is more important than the number of kids in the classroom, the the number of teachers in the classroom, military recruitment. This is life and death for people. And $30,000, quite frankly, we ought to be ashamed that that's the little amount that we're spending on this issue.
Let me, if I could...
Commissioner Elliott.
Ask the superintendent, this is, we have many contracts with the Center for Youth. What, how much money have we allocated to the Center for Youth? I've seen contracts in the $200,000 mark that we've paid. So, we're not only giving Center for Youth $30,000, but we have given them, you know, two or three times, I've seen contracts in the amount of 230,000, 100 and some thousand in. So, you know, this is just one contract that has $30,000, but there have been contracts that are in hundreds of thousands that we've given to Center for Youth.
Commissioner, if you take a look at, again, just the short answer to your question is that, I certainly don't memorize those numbers. I can get that for you. We, the board approves everything over 25,000, and we give the board copies of everything under 25,000. We certainly can give you an aggregate as to the amount of money that's gone to the Center for Youth Services. As you also know, the United Way gives to the Center for Youth Services, City of Rochester, a number of different organizations, they do phenomenal work. We contract where the work is needed. We don't, I guess, keep count of how much money they're getting.
I guess my point is that we're not only giving the $30,000.
Absolutely. What we do for other kinds of services, they're working with the younger, they're working with the I'm Ready Program, for instance, they're part of our in-school suspension programs with ATS. They have also a number of benefactors who give private donations to the group. They do phenomenal work. This is why so many people in the city look to contract with them and look to leverage their services. So, this, as Commissioner, while I was talking about, this is for homeless students. Their other services have to do with all the kinds of issues, including students who have discipline issues, but we have, again, a number of different contracts with the Center for Youth Services. If you'd like an aggregate and exactly for what...
No, but I think Commissioner, Marilyn Patterson-Grant is actually working on that because Commissioner Elliott requested that at a last board meeting, so we should be getting that report. Am I correct, Ms. Patterson-Grant, soon?
Okay. Apologies.
Thank you.
Okay, the last thing is just on, just a comment on Resolution 87. I'm glad to see that we are finally moving towards starting the construction on...
Construction trades.
I ran into a couple of the labor leaders, and they were really upset. They were about ready to throw on the towel with us.
Commissioner, if I may, just give one kudos to Commissioner Campos because I believe she's the one who brought this to me initially. You have to understand that our general counsel and the legal team did quite a bit of work trying to get this through. This is an unusual kind of collaboration. I understand the frustration, and I was in touch with UNICOM throughout this process. We looked for every piece we could with the education law to make this work. In essence, at one point, we're becoming construction, I guess, folks because we're hiring students and paying them. So, we had to find a way to make sure that we're on solid legal ground with kids. When you're talking about young kids working at construction sites and building a house, and folks, if you didn't know, these kids at Edison are building a house, or they're going to be selling to some family in the very near future. You had to make sure that all the licenses, the contractors, et cetera, were in place to put our teachers in place of building a house with kids, and then perhaps, God forbid, five years from now, they're being sued for something that may have happened or not happened. We're the house, we want to make sure that we were on solid legal ground, as well as making sure that the partnership with UNICOM was also done well. But yes, it took a while, but we got it done.
Good, good news. Any other, anything else on 75 through 89? Hey, I'll call the question, well, I can't call the question, but I'll ask for all those in favor of Resolutions 75 through 89 to please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Aye, with the exception of, I abstain on 79.
Okay, and any other noes?
I'll have an abstention first.
Oh, okay, yes.
I abstain on 76, and noes on 77 through 81.
So, that means, Madam Clerk, if my...
Oh, excuse me, also 90.
Madam Clerk, if I am correct, that means that the Resolution 79 does not pass because Commissioner Williams had to abstain, and Commissioner Elliott voted no, so that means that it would be 2, 1, 0, which means that this homeless resolution to provide support for students in the district that are homeless would not pass, and we'd have to bring this back up for reconsideration at another meeting.
Yes, otherwise, we'll lose the grant money, Commissioner.
Can we bring this back up Tuesday?
Yes. Next, that concludes our resolutions. We are going to move on to unfinished business from the previous meeting. We have an item from many months, recruiting by organizations, permitted by law, Policy Commissioner Elliott is Chair of the Policy Committee. Do you want to start?
President Evans, I make a motion that we accept, that we approve Policy 1240.1 as amended. This is the recruiting by organizations with restrictive membership or employment practices authorized and permitted by law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos, and now we will open discussion on this policy.
Commissioner Evans, President Evans.
Vice President White.
Yeah, I have certainly had the opportunity to discuss and express my point of view on this, so I'm not going to belabor the point. I do think the best way I can describe our efforts here, or the law, I should say, not our efforts, but the law here is unjust, unfair, and from my legal perspective, unconstitutional. And in summary, all I can say to folks out there, that notwithstanding this fact that this law is unjust, unfair, and unconstitutional, I want you all to know that I find it unacceptable, and I will be unwavering and unrelenting in my efforts to bring this law down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues?
I was just going to say that during the Policy Committee meeting, we really tried to make an effort to make parents involved, but also to try and get 100% rate. And the only way that we can do that is by offering students an opportunity to be able to opt out. And looking at this, one of the things that I heard is that 7th and 8th graders would be asked, that's completely untrue, it would be 17 and 18-year-olds, and that was something that was verified by our general counsel. One of the other things, if you look with this new policy, there's going to be multiple communication with parents. So, it's not just, parents are going to get a letter and that's it. They're going to hear from the district in another medium to make sure that it's reinforced so that parents can be able to have this discussion and be part of the conversation. Couple weeks later, what'll happen is, and simultaneously, kids will actually, the students will hear from the teachers that they're going to have to make a decision whether they'd like to opt out. And so, a couple, they have a couple of weeks to think about it. After that, what'll end up happening is, they will make a decision, and the teacher or the person that is collecting these papers will collect them right away so that we can make sure that there is privacy because, and that they can make that decision. And so, as an elected official, for me, I feel like we have to be able to advocate for this and bringing this law down, but we also have to abide by it, and it would be fiscally irresponsible if we didn't do something about it because we have lots of money at stake. So, thank you guys for being collaborative and unfortunately, making, making the best out of a very difficult situation.
Right. The bottom line is, as I stated at the Policy Committee with this policy, is that regardless of how any of us on the board feel about the military, and I'm the only member of the board that's here right now, other than Commissioner Powell, that voted for the 2005 policy, and we, and we got away with it for years. However, we got a letter from the Deputy Commissioner, and we did get a letter from someone in Washington. It was no longer just the local folks that people mentioned letting us know that they would start the process and we would be in danger of losing federal funds. So, in a way, we were kind of pumped. So, however, how, how I will work to change this No Child Left Behind law, because it's the No Child Left Behind law, this had no business in the No Child Left Behind law, but we are obligated, when I take that oath, when I took that oath four, two years ago, I had to take an oath to abide by the law, even the ones that I don't like. And as a representative to the National School Boards Association, my colleagues are very familiar that every year, I come back and talk about how Congress has been dragging its feet on changing the law in terms of No Child Left Behind. It was no better year than this year with the changes that happened in Congress for them to change that law. However, they still have not done that. My hope is that next year, that they remove this provision in terms of providing this access out of, out of the No Child Left Behind law. But until they do, we have to abide by it. It really had no business in the No Child Left Behind law, and they snuck it in as a provision, and we have to abide by that. The last thing I'll say is that I just want people in the community to be careful. I'm a graduate of Rochester City School District. I have five other brothers and sisters that were graduated from Rochester City School District. A lot of my friends, lifelong friends are graduates of Rochester City School District. It's important that we make this distinction that because a lot of us that went through the district were not rich, may not have come from backgrounds where our parents were wealthy, that we are somehow unable to make a decision that involves life and death on the military on our own because we're, because we're poor and because we don't know. And that was implied a couple of times in previous meetings, and it's very important of the language that we use. I have complete confidence in the parents of this district. I talk to them every day, they live next to me. They are able to make these decisions. And if we don't like this policy, encourage the parents or the students to say they don't want their information sent. Encourage that, and that's what we need to do. So, for me, it's not about how I feel about the military or any of the adventures that we went on in the last couple of years, it's about a policy and them threatening us and making, and it was no longer a threat, it now has become a promise to remove federal aid, and I just can't do that. A district like Pittsburgh, they can, they can do that, but in a district like Rochester, with our poverty rate, we can't have our Title I funds yanked. So, I will work to change the No Child Left Behind law, but right now, I have to abide by the law and use my constitutional right to advocate for the change. Any other comments from my colleagues before we call the question on Policy 1240.1? Okay, all those in favor of Policy 1240.1, this will be a voice vote, starting with Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice President White, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Elliott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the policy as amended changes. We have some other new business, Commissioner...
Your moral power.
Commissioner...
Your moral power.
Excuse me. You're out of order. You're out of order.
I am so repugnant by...
Have a good night.
Your moral power.
Have a good night. Commissioner Williams, you have something that you would like to refer to the Policy Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, I'd like to introduce a resolution which will be referred to the committee for further discussion. In the interest of time, I won't read the entire resolution, but what it really does in sum is to limit the class size, resolution is to limit the class size to a maximum of 18 students in grades K to 2, grades 3 to 6, 20 students, and high school, 22 students. And I'll forward this on to the board clerk.
Yes, and I would ask that that be forwarded on to the Policy Committee for consideration. I would also urge members of the audience, if you have not done so, and also my board colleagues, as that policy is being referred to the Policy Committee for consideration, to also know that class size is detailed in the current teacher's contract, which expired but is still currently in force on pages 41. Section 32 details class sizes. So, that's something that also can take place in the, in the process of negotiation, but that matter is forward, Madam Chair, to the Policy Committee for discussion. Commissioner White?
Two things. I mean, I think that's a critical point. I mean, if, if, if in fact, the board is inclined to change its policy, that has to be communicated during these negotiations because you can create a policy, but the contract will trump it. So, it's important that the right hand know what the left hand is doing. These two efforts, if there are two efforts, have to be coordinated. The other thing that I will say is, surely, this particular resolution belongs in policy, but also, I would respectfully suggest that after policy puts its fingerprints on it, that it be sent to Excellence in Student Achievement, because what more appropriate committee could this be sent to but to that committee? So, I would ask that after, and we've done this on multiple occasions, you know, you don't just send a resolution to, I know I've submitted several resolutions, and they've gone through the process of going through several committees, and clearly, this is something that belongs in Excellence in Student Achievement as well. So, I would respectfully request that once policy finishes, and I believe, Commissioner Elliott, you are Chair of that committee, that a referral be made to Excellence in Student Achievement. And again, this, I don't know how you're going to coordinate it, but somebody's got to be talking to the district's team about this.
I also may add the Finance Committee, because the financial impact can be tremendously large.
Right. All right. Thank you. Our, we have some speakers addressing other than agenda items. The first speaker is Glennie Williams. And Mr. Williams will be followed by Elaine Francesco.
I'm glad that you felt like staying. This is important business. I'm glad to see you. I will cop to, because I like to always tell the truth about myself. I had promised 200, I only had about 50 people. I'm going to work on it. I gotta cry more, beg more, but we're going to be here. Let me say, first, I want to talk about two quick things, points of information I really don't want to tell. I put my name on the speakers list days ago. I asked, to be put on, and so you can speak at the beginning of the meeting, you got to speak to the agenda. So, what did I do? I asked what the agenda is. They couldn't tell me. Today at 12 o'clock, 12 o'clock, and that's the last minute you can sign up, I was sitting here in the board office. I asked the board secretary, "What's the agenda?" She couldn't tell me. So, that makes me wind up here at whatever time it is now, and my people then left. I really like, if you have the rule, Mr. Chairperson, that we're supposed, if you want to speak to the agenda, then you can speak at the time of the meeting, you should at least be willing to tell us the agenda, at least by 12 o'clock on the day of the meeting. That's only courteous. You talk about us being courteous, I think you should be courteous to us. And so, you should at least let us know what the agenda is and time enough so that we could sign up appropriately. Two, someone talked about this whole thing about class size, not about class size right now, that's an issue I want to get to, but talked about how you count in terms of starting graduation counts at 9th grade. This district, last year or two years ago, our superintendent decided to forget about 7th and 8th grade. Let me tell you how that works. Our highest dropout rate, look at when it happens. You are all board members, when does most people drop out of our school? 7th and 8th grade. So, if you start counting your core constituency for graduation in 9th grade, you've actually cut the number down. Like at 7th grade, let's say there was about 800 kids. By 9th grade, if you count then, it only might be 650. And so, your numerator is lower, so you get to look better in the end number. Do you understand what I'm saying? That's a game our superintendent did. We think, and that's one reason why the state is going along with, slowly going along with what we're saying, we think when we put them in the house, school, in kindergarten, they should count, we should count them until they graduate. If they're our kids, we're supposed to take care of them. Let me tell you, I don't lose my kids just because the year changed. If you, my four kids, I know them every year, and I don't, and whether it's one day or another, I still keep up with them. I really think we should count all the kids from the beginning of 7th grade. When they start officially senior high portion of their school, we should start counting them. And if you count that number, you'll see our graduation rate isn't as good as the superintendent tells you. Okay, on the three issues that I've come to talk to you, we thought, I, let me say very, very strongly, the community really appreciates Commissioner Williams. We're not related, but we strongly appreciate Commissioner Williams for doing what he said he would do. I don't know exactly why Tom Brennan is not here today, but he had promised us to do something, and I'm putting it on public record because I'm telling everybody, he promised us to do something. He promised me his latest last night he would be here to do something, and he's not here today. Now, I will give him this one out. If he's sick or he had a family crisis, cool with me, but last night, not two weeks ago, last night he told me he would be...
He had a family crisis.
Oh, he had some, well, I said, I was quick to say, if he had something sick, I would give him a break, a way out. Three things. I heard the beep, but I'm sorry.
You can just wrap it up, Mr. Williams. Go ahead.
We are strongly supportive of class size. I'll let this go through the process, but we can show you that we looked at your numbers, Mr. Superintendent, and according to your books even in elementary school, your class size average is below or right around 18. So, we're not asking you to do something not, you're not able to do or has a large impact on your cost. It is, look in your book, because they say, building by building, what the average class size would be according to how he set it up, and most of them already are below the 18. So, what we're asking you is not nothing that, we just don't want to come here next year and walk into a classroom, and all of a sudden, we see 25, 30 students. We're just saying, you say you can do it at 18, you put it in your budget book that you can do at 18, we're saying, cap it, and we will, we will have great faith, and we'll walk into classrooms next year and see no more than 18. That's what we want you to know about that. and we'll walk into classrooms next year and see no more than eighteen. Uh, that's what we want, want you to know about that. Two, uh, I call it Bow Street Building. I didn't hear no talk about it tonight, but let me say to you, I've talked to more and more parents, and we do not want our kids in the Bow Street Building. If you've got nowhere else to put them, we've got two solutions for you. One, leave them at fourteen school. I went to fourteen school. I'm sixty-one years old. That has been a great productive school all the years I've been in Rochester. I don't know why you wanna move our kids from our neighborhood schools all the way over to Bow Street. I don't know why you wanna do that. The numbers are not that big even. I don't know why you wanna move them. Leave our kids there. We know that building, and we know that building's safe. Two, if you really wanna use that building for something, then move central office into Bow Street Building.
Right.
We'll be happy to let you move central office into Bow Street Building, and we will have our kids come here. We'll make a classroom for, uh, fourteen school kids in this building.
Okay, your last point was, your last point was...
I, I got you. I only got one, uh, one last thing. On a... You caught me hearing, uh, you rushed me. On accountability, oh, yes, accountability. We are strongly, uh, Commissioner Elliott has talked about, uh, and the superintendent's talked about, uh, program, uh, accountability for principals. In other words, doing a stronger job on holding principals accountable for their productivities of their buildings around education. We, we didn't hear what's happening in the contract, but we strongly want you to improve that, uh, those provisions so that accountability is more. We strongly want you to put cultural competency P in that, in that, in that program. So we want you to know those three things, and for now, we'll leave you alone. But I'm glad you're having a meeting next week, because we're gonna be here, and I'm gonna try to work to find my two hundred again. Some people are always saying, well, you keep promising two hundred, and we, we, it's hard for us. Well, I'm gonna cry, beg, and, and shed tears. Because we're gonna keep trying to show you that our parents want quality education for our kids, and we don't believe that can be done in large class size. We don't believe that can be done with no, oh, that was the third issue. Art teachers and music teachers. We have found that art teachers and music teachers are being less, and there are gonna be programs in elementary schools, schools where some kids will not get their fair dose of, by dose, their fair exposure to art and music, and we really want you to address that issue.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. You were very quick.
Elaine, um, Francesco, followed by Lori Thomas.
My original remarks came in at two minutes, thirty seconds, so I'll use the thirty seconds to preface it. And if we're worried about bringing spending in line, it was fifty-four thousand dollars for a newsletter, would be two-thirds of a teacher. Let's have the Franklin Global Media Kids do a newsletter. My name is Elaine Francesco. As stated, I'm a district parent. My recent experience as the city's council and speaking at these board meetings on behalf of Rochester students of the budget meeting today's remarks and requests. I feel like the board, the district, would like us, the parents, just go away and stop bothering you. We're trying to hide under the bed, hoping we won't look for you. New York State's open meeting law does not actually require that agendas for public meetings such as this one be published publicly in advance of the meeting. The board's own bylaws do require that the superintendent provide all resolutions to be considered two weeks before the meeting. All written material is to be delivered to board members forty-eight hours before the meeting. So it's not like you don't have an idea of what the agenda will be before the meeting. I ask that the Policy Committee address this and develop a proposal in the spirit of the open meeting law and the much touted claims to transparency. To amend the bylaws such the agenda and resolutions for vote will be published in detail on the website twenty-four hours before the board meeting. City parents are regularly castigated in the media, radio talk shows, and blogs, accused of not caring, not being involved, not taking part, not doing our jobs as parents. But when we try to become involved and advocate for our children, we find roadblocks in every direction. City parents as a whole don't have many resources or tools for public communication. The district, the board have the ear of local media, use robocalls, have financial resources to produce and mail letters, brochures about this and that. Our PTA has twelve hundred dollars in the pot. At forty-four cents, we don't get bulk rate, that would buy thirty-two hundred stamps. How many school households are there in the district that we could reach? I can't send out a press release. Well, I could, but who would take any notice? Without a collective voice, we are discounted as that crazy pain in the pitute mom over at soda, or Wilson, our school of fourteen. Board meetings are one of our few places to be heard on the record. On research, our three-minute limit is actually part of the board minutes, not two. But as the next step, I ask that the board move in a more sprightly manner to establish quarterly open mic nights as a way for the board, the superintendent, parents, and community to have a conversation, a town hall session, about budget, classroom size, and all of these issues. A conversation. So far, the back and forth in the media has only served to build misunderstanding, frustration, and animosity, when our goal should be working together for our children.
Thank you. Lori Thomas? Lori Thomas?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, recently, at a board meeting, Superintendent Bresard stated that the data concerning lower class size comes solely from a California study. Information taken from a report by the Health and Education Research Operative Services Incorporated, or HEROES, says otherwise. It states, "Class size is among the most thoroughly researched topics in public education." Glass, Kayhan, and Smith found that the greatest gains in achievement occurred among students who were taught in classes of fifteen students or less. Their findings, as class size increases, achievement decreases. The Far West Laboratory for Educational Research and Development reported class size was shown to have more substantial effect on teachers than on students or the instructional environment. The effect of class size was more significant for students below the age of twelve. N. Philby and colleagues reported that teacher attitudes improved in smaller classes. Teachers were able to reach a child and help when the help was needed. Teachers were able to relax more, feel less frustrated, and were able to create a more positive learning climate that discouraged classroom disruptions. Attention rates for students increased as class size decreased. The range of those paying attention was fifty-six percent in large classes to seventy-two percent in smaller classes. The Indiana State Department of Education reduced class size after a study compared reading and mathematics achievements of K-three classes at a ratio of fourteen to one to K-three classes averaging twenty-three students. Standardized reading and math test scores showed that fourteen percent more students in the small classes exceeded normal growth compared to students in the regular classes. Teachers also show improvements in the behavior of students, increased productivity, and more hands-on participatory learning. Robinson and Weddle Bowles concluded that smaller classes were beneficial in the early primary grades. A review conducted for the California Educational Research Cooperative concluded, "For all student populations, for all student populations, class size research offers convincing evidence of an important link between lowered student-teacher ratios and higher achievement." Ernest L. Boyer, president of the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching, laid out a four-point plan, which includes reducing class sizes to no more than fifteen students per teacher for the early elementary grades. The National Soc, the National Association of Elementary School Principals Delegate Assembly revised their class size policy to recommend a student-teacher ratio of fifteen to one. To ignore this data is to ignore reality, and the reality is that student arrests have increased, mental hygiene arrests have increased, student violence in school has increased, and now to add insult to injury, the superintendent wants to increase class size, which the data shows will increase student failure. And if you wanna save money, take me out of the, take me out of the school without students and put me back in the classroom.
Deion Rayhill?
Evening Commissioners. I'm Deion Rayhill. I'm a business teacher in the school instructor unit over at Hart Street Oasis. A number of instructors in our program work under grants from the state of New York, federal government, and outside companies, private companies. That's where we get a majority of our pay, some of us. I wanna mention two grants that we have, one's for two hundred thousand dollars, another one's for six hundred thousand dollars. These programs could be in jeopardy if the instructors who run these programs have their positions terminated. It's a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Special Board Meeting, July twenty-eighth, two thousand nine, five thirty. Um, Board Business Meeting, August twenty-seventh, two thousand nine. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.